I would like to welcome everyone here this evening. The, um, we have a full agenda. I'll have one clarification on the agenda, and that is Agenda I of number three for the council. There's two action items that are part of that that aren't listed on the agenda, uh, or they are called out on the agenda. One is that we will have a, um, decision to close the public hearing, and that will be by voice vote. And then we will then have the resolution action, and that will be by paperless electronic vote, okay? Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. We'll move then to Agenda I of number two, which is to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on May fourteenth, twenty nineteen. Council has those minutes, are there any corrections?
Move approval.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the minutes as they were prepared. We'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and that motion does pass. So we'll move then to Agenda I of number three. Uh, this is the, uh, tax abatement request for Harrison Truck Center. So with that, Sharon, I'll turn to you, and then you can introduce Tara. Uh, we will have the public hearing at the public hearing. We will have a, um, you know, input from, as part of the public hearing, from any member of the council, or the applicants, or a member of the audience. Then we'll close the public hearing. With that.
Mayor and council, tonight you are considering a tax abatement request under the business tax abatement policy that was adopted earlier this year by the council. The, the city already has a residential, um, property tax abatement, and this is for the business side, and, and this is the first application that, uh, pertains to that particular policy. Tara Anken, EDA director, will give background on the request, as well as a representative from Harrison Truck Center.
Thank you, Sharon. Tara?
Thank you, everyone, for allowing us to be here tonight to, uh, visit with you about this project. I'll give a quick overview, and then I'll let Chad Harrison, um, elaborate a little bit more about it. But, the proposed project that we have in front of us is a nine thousand square foot addition, which would be a partial remodel, but then in addition to their existing facility. So if any of you have been out there, it would be expanded out the long way from the streetscape side. And then that would add ten service bays, an additional, um, great jobs, which he can talk to the number and types of jobs that would be added with this project. And then they're looking to start, or hoping to start, uh, later, like in June or July, depending on timing and, and weather conditions and such. So, we all know that's been kind of a struggle lately. Uh, the abatement proposal that, um, has been, that has came forward is in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Now, if we recall the way that the abatement policy that was set up and passed, it's an up to amount, so, nothing is granted unless there's an increment that is made, and that abatement is only on the increment. So, essentially, they have to build and produce that additional taxing capacity in order to realize any benefit. And that, again, is in the amount of up to fifty thousand dollars. And with any commercial project that comes forward, there is an abatement agreement that, pending, uh, council approval on this, or any other commercial projects, there's an abatement agreement that would be executed afterwards, that, that goes along with the resolution and the policy that outlines expectations. So, uh, with that, I will turn it over to Chad Harrison of Harrison Trucking Centers, and he can explain a little bit more about their plans.
Thank you, Tara. Chad?
Thank you. Um, our plans are for, uh, roughly ten bays. Will actually be room for fourteen trucks, fourteen additional repair bays. Um, square footage is a little larger than the nine thousand square footage where we're headed towards. Um, the tax abatement will help with a little larger, uh, capacity than we originally thought. Um, our hope is, uh, within the first year, hopefully two years, we'll probably have two to four more technicians, additional technicians to add. Um, long-term goals, we'd like to see up to sixteen technicians out of that facility. Um, and with that, would add two to four, uh, additional support staff to help manage those. Um, so, we could see eight to ten additional staff at the facility when, uh, it's all going. Technicians, a- as maybe some of you know, are extremely difficult to find, so, we've got a strong, uh, recruiting process where we go to high schools and colleges and team up with them to bring students in and work with us. So, we're pretty confident that we'll find them. We've had a lot of luck at our other locations. Uh, we have three in Iowa and four in Minnesota, and, uh, we've, we've done really well with recruiting, so we're pretty confident we'll be able to add that staff, uh, up here in Marshall.
Thank you.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions on anything that was included with the packet?
Yes, as we open it up for public comment, you're done with your presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. So we will open it up for public comment, uh, either, as part of the public hearing, either from the council or from members of the audience. Chad?
Yeah, just curiosity, and your, uh, technicians that you're looking for, what you're starting pay?
Um, as an intern, we're running fifteen to seventeen dollars an hour. So, um, a trained technician, um, they come out of school, you're probably in that seventeen range after they've graduated, and they go up to thirty-five, even forty dollars an hour that we get up to as technicians as they get trained. And we invest the training, so, um, for us to find technicians, we actually have a tuition reimbursement. If they go through a two-year, uh, diesel program, we pay their school back if they sign off, sign up with us for a two-year commitment. And so they'll get their tuition repaid, so. We, we, they're, they're a high commodity, so they're, they're well-paid.
Thank you. Steve?
This will take some of my thunder for the council member board, uh, and commission's, um, discussion at the end of the meeting, but, we talked about this at the EDA, and, and for that exact reason. Um, I think this is a wonderful idea. We're investing in our community, we're bringing in, you know, good-paying jobs that are set to stay, and, our hope is that Harrison Trucking becomes a nationwide leader, and everybody brings their trucks to Marshall. So, that's our goal. I, I speak in favor of this.
Craig?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, and I, I concur with, uh, Dr. Meister. I, I fully agree with that, and I, and I applaud you for the, for the effort to expand. And the only question that I have is, is that do you envision us then, with those additional techs, actually running multiple shifts and?
Yes, yep. Two, two full shifts would be the, the case. Right now, we have a split shift, so we're open later, but, uh, to accommodate the people we'd like to have, it'll, it'll likely be a two-full shift.
Great, awesome. Yeah, and I, again, I'm with Dr. Meister, I'm in full support of this, and I, this is exactly why we're doing the abatement pieces, to encourage this exact thing.
Before the council meeting, we had EDA interviews, and one of the questions I asked the people interviewing is how do we attract young people? And this is an ideal situation where the EDA has put together a tax abatement policy, a company's using it, and we're attracting good-paying jobs, which are going to either keep our young people in town, or attract young families to town. Uh, this is how I believe, when I, when I brought this forward, envisioned this program, how it should work. And I'm in favor of, of passing this, too.
Any other input as part of this public hearing? Either from the council or the audience?
I have a few questions here. I think I have the most recent copy of the, um, abatement policy. In, uh, section three, qualification standards, paragraph A, minimum required standards, um, there's a line item, number two, and it says, "The developer must demonstrate that the project is not financially feasible but for the use of tax abatement." So i- is that a requirement here?
Yes, because they, originally, they were considering a little bit smaller, but with the additional benefit of a fifty thousand dollar, they can make it the facility that they need for years to come, and not be adding on, you know, little by little. They want to maximize it now, so they can add as many jobs that they feel would be demanded.
Uh, when I look at the policy, I, I, I'm thinking that, um, there's different ways you can interpret that, that line item, but, uh, one way to interpret it is this, that, uh, if they didn't get the tax abatement, they wouldn't do anything. And, and that's not the case here. They're just able to do fifty thousand dollars more because they get a tax break from the city. So it's not that the project wouldn't take place at all. It could take place, but they wouldn't have the extra fifty thousand from the city to do it. Is that the way you interpret this, this paragraph or sentence?
It's up for debate, so you could say that, yes.
It, to me, uh, if you, if you use that interpretation, um, certainly, anytime you give them an extra fifty thousand, they can spend an extra fifty thousand. I mean, that would, any project could meet that requirement then. I, I, I'm wondering if the, the intent of the, uh, policy in the first place was saying, if we didn't give them the tax abatement, it wouldn't happen at all. We wouldn't have the project at all. And I don't think that's the case here, probably. It's, it's just that they're able to do more, the project would take place no matter what I assume. It's just that they're able to do fifty thousand dollars more because the city's giving them fifty thousand dollars extra.
And with this tool, I think any project that comes forward asking for this percentage of an amount, if it, if it can't work without this percentage of amount, then it's probably not a good project. I mean, if you look at the percentage-wise, if it was a sixty thousand dollar project and they're asking for fifty thousand, that's a little bit different than, you know, the percentages that are being presented or requested on this project. It makes a good project better, but it shouldn't make a bad project good.
The other way to, um, kind of view that is that, yeah, the project may still happen on a smaller scale, and may not be here, maybe in a, in a community that has a policy like this.
Mm-hmm.
I would, I, I would actually argue the other way. I would say, "The project is the project with the, as it's laid out. That is the project. It would not happen without this fifty thousand. A different project, a smaller project, would happen."
And I think, the, and I think the other part of this, when we developed the abatement policy, was exactly this, was to show developers, commercial and residential developers, because we did two policies. We did the commercial policy, and we did, we did the residential. And it's to encourage this type of development, that is, and, uh, showing that the city is willing to be in the game to promote this type of work, knowing that we're going to defer part of the increase. It's not like we're giving them fifty thousand dollars that we have. We wouldn't have this money but for them building this project. And this is an investment back and encouraging development to, to push this forward. And I think this is, this type of project is exactly what we had in mind. I mean, we can certainly debate the language, Councilman Baric, or, and I, I mean, I think you're correct in your interpretation, but that is that interpretation, but I do agree. I think but for the fifty thousand, this project would look different, and, and I, I think, I think it's a good project, and I fully support it.
Sharon, you had a comment?
When we developed the policy, we discussed the, the but-for language. Under Minnesota statutes for a tax abatement, the but-for test is not a requirement, unlike TIF, where for a TIF project, you do need to meet the but-for test. However, staff recommended this language be put in the policy to, to bring you the best of the best, and to, uh, ensure that the projects that are brought forward for a business tax abatement, um, have value and add value to the city. So there's, there's a little more latitude in terms of staff recommendation and, and their opinions on whether it meets the but-for. I know one of the discussions we had with this particular application is, uh, we believe that the, without the tax abatement, that the project would be delayed, and the uncertainty of a delay is, would it, would it happen? We weren't so sure that it would happen if it was delayed, uh, just because of different market items that happen. So, staff, in our initial discussions, in, uh, when we met with finance director and city assessor and EDA director, determined that this did meet the but-for, uh, language that you see in this policy.
Thank you, Sharon. Other input as part of the public hearing? Any member of the audience who should speak?
I, I just, in response to her comment there, I think the, um, I'm thinking that the, the reason for the but-for language in TIF and other areas is that the idea that, um, we're helping those that need help. Uh, it's a financial needs type of thing. And where there's a financial need, there would be assistance, but where there's not a financial need, where you really don't need the money, it's just, uh, extra profit or extra money to the developer, uh, then maybe it's not something that should be done. So I, like I said, I, I think that, uh, there's a reason for that provision in the state law for TIF, and I, and again, I think it's because of financial need. This, this company needs it, or it wouldn't happen. And so I think there's a difference.
Part of the application did require they submit some financial data, and I, I don't believe we could have included that, but they were required to give us some, some financial information as part of this application to, to further validate the but-for test.
And I, and I, I want to make it clear, too, that everyone up here is in favor of economic development. We all want to bring businesses to Marshall, we want to expand our business base and our tax base. Um, it's just, um, a different philosophy, I think, on, on what the role of government is. And, uh, uh, I, I have concerns about government involvement and, and government assisting those that don't need assistance. I, I, I favor helping those that need help financially, but not helping those that don't have financial needs.
Other input as part of the public hearing? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Second then. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion. If not, we'll, a voice vote on this, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. We will now consider the, uh, the resolution on the tax abatement. Are there any questions about the resolution?
I move the resolution.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Now, discussion. Russ?
Mayor, I have one question. On section three, Tara, and it's probably three point oh-three?
Yep.
Says the tax abatement shall be for the residential capital improvement?
Yep. We need to make that change for residential, and three point zero-one and three point zero-four are somewhat redundant, so.
Okay.
We just ask for permission for staff to make those two minor changes prior to Mr. Mayor signings, should this pass.
Good. One other addition, Mr. Mayor, if I could, and if, we do want to include the percentage amounts in addition to the, just stating that it's five years.
Yep.
The percentage amount should be in the resolution.
Perfect.
Any other questions about the resolution? Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion. Close the voting?
Just a second.
And the motion?
Yeah, I thought I did, yeah. Sorry.
Okay, so, rush and vote again. Now we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you, we look forward to this project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Agenda I of number four is the, uh, consider the awarded bids for the wastewater, uh, wastewater treatment facilities improvement project. We have a recommendation to consider the award of bids to Magni Construction Incorporated. Uh, presenting this, I believe we have a couple people, but the, we'll start with Glenn Olson, Director of Public Works City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Uh, tonight, we have two representatives from Bolton and Mink here for, uh, the bid evaluation of the, um, bids that we got in for the wastewater treatment improvements. So, uh, John Peterson and Kelly Yonkey are here to, uh, summarize and, and bring that bid evaluation forward, and Bob Van Moore and Scott Trutson are here from the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, they're here to, uh, answer any questions at all. First of all, give you the evaluation, but, secondly, to present to you the, um, treatment, um, concept of this facility. So, if you come up and, uh, and, uh, make the presentation, and then we'll have some discussion after the end of the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. We have Kelly and John here from Bolton and Mink. Uh, they, uh, to start out with, I'd like, John, to kind of summarize the memorandum that was part of your, your council packet, to give some, some good history of how the project was developed, and some of the, the turns that we had to do, uh, while developing this, and it just gives you a good overview of where we're at today with the recommendations, so.
Also, just, Kelly Yonkey, Bolton and Mink, was here a couple years ago, and we talked facility plan. But Mark Magni from Magni Construction is present, he's also here. So if you have any questions, we get further into it about constructability or whatever, he's here to answer any questions you might have. So just, you know, one more person that's here to answer questions. With that, I'll let John discuss the memo.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I believe the memorandum was in your packets, so you've had a chance, so I will try to highlight that, but certainly ask questions as we come along here, if you want. We, we gave you some background on how we got through the design, and some things that changed during, during the design due to some permit issues that we saw, so we were allowed to, uh, push off what had been projected as a fairly soon rapid phase two that would have been implemented in the next couple of years. That phase two is now pushed out, maybe a decade, uh, what I didn't put in there. That phase two, uh, not only carries a capital cost to it, but a seven hundred thousand dollar a year, uh, operating cost, so, uh, we were thrilled to push that as far as we can. That did modify what we were thinking in terms of how we put the project together, okay? So, and then we dealt with some issues. This plant is thirty-five to forty-five years old, so there are, uh, probably ongoing issues continuously coming up. Um, so we identified those as we went through design, um, kind of modified what we'd initially designed, you know, a year ago to submit. Came, came what we did, finished design late last year, or into this year, actually, uh, because we got kind of compressed with the changes. That's where we got to the components that we designed. We worked a long time with staff to develop the project that met the needs of what they were looking for at the facility, okay? Everything we put in there was stuff that we worked through with staff and, and developed with them to operate correctly. Uh, so, so when we went through, now we have the bids in our hands, we went through a little evalu- evaluation to see, okay, where are we at? Because it's true, uh, costs came in a little higher than what we initially estimated. Well, okay, quite a bit higher than what we initially estimated. Um, and we can identify a few things. We know there's some cost volatility out there right now. Uh, we see that in other projects that are bidding. We know this project bid with three very close bids, that tells us that our bidders were seeing the same project. So, we know that was a, was a plus, okay? But we also know there's some volatility in terms of material pricing, uh, particularly in terms of electrical components, that was, uh, one that kind of got up there. Some of that had to do with the nature of the project, that make it hard to evaluate where you're at in terms of cost, okay? This project has got a lot of parts that are being implemented as, kind of on the fly, so we need to keep the facility running as we do it, particularly with the electrical. We're replacing thirty-five to forty-five-year-old electrical components. Not only have those costs of those components gone up in the last few years, uh, they have to be staged in such a way that Bob's guys can keep the plant running while we're replacing that equipment. So we saw that kind of volatility. We then also saw things that we, as we went through designing with staff, things that we made what I call long-term decisions in terms of what we were putting in. So, we've identified several of these. The, the, one of the big ones is biosolid storage. We did manage to push off biosolids treatment for some time, because that's been hinged on some permit issues that are still coming, right? But it didn't make sense to upgrade the actual treatment process at this point, waiting for those. But the storage, they're already running short on storage because of the way the storage works, and the way they try to operate with the storage. And so we really worked through what would work best. As you saw in the memo, the way they are able to decant the biosolids, and by decant it means, we come in with a biosolid that's maybe a two percent solid, they, they get it to down to maybe a six to eight percent solid, which means there's quite a bit less sludge that has to get hauled out and gotten rid of, okay? It also decreases the amount of storage that's required. But to do that, you have to be able to decant the solids. Right now, they work in their two round storage tanks. Uh, to do that, they aren't set up very well for that. Somebody's on a ladder climbing up valves to, to change valves out to do this, the valving plugs, what the, what I'll call a calcification problem. Um, staff works through it, and they do a great job of getting it thickened, but then once it's that thick, it becomes very difficult to remix and get it back out. And the round tanks really have a difficult time with that, okay? Because they, I might be too far in the weeds, but it stratifies, and you can't really get the sludge to mix up. It's not really a liquid anymore, it's kind of a semi-liquid. Okay? So what we worked through was an option that gave them compartmentalized storage with better mixing in each compartment, and decanting, because once we then transfer into the existing round tanks, we can keep them mixed. Remixing them is really difficult when it's that thick, but keeping them there, once they're there, we can make that happen. We know that from the experience that staff is having now with those tanks. So, we did design, it's, 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 yes, it's sludge storage, but it's more of the sludge treatment process than it is just storage. And so it has some cost attributed to it that didn't get really reflected when you just think, "I'm going to store a bunch of liquid sludge in a tank," okay? So that cost did get up, uh, probably beyond early estimates, right, as we worked through what staff really needed to do. Uh, we had several other items along the way. Uh, we identified, uh, problematic pumps in the trickling filter system that we think we can upgrade and, and reduce the maintenance on those, because those pumps are failing on a four-to-five-year basis. Uh, we think revamping that, along with revamping the forty-year-old media in the trickling filter, will improve that operation. Uh, we identified some modifications to the aeration system that, while the added costs are going to greatly decrease the operating expense, because we're going to use less power to pump air into the, into the sludge. Um, and really, a number of other items like that that staff identified. We also worked with them on ideas like using materials that were going to last another forty years, okay? So we used stainless on a lot of clarifier mechanisms that were not used previously, stainless on other parts of the metals project, okay, because of the corrosion we see at the wastewater plant. Those are long-term investments, it's true, but they're saving short-term maintenance costs that we're seeing accrue fairly rapidly, actually, okay? In, so, when we saw the bids come through, we know we have bids that are accurately reflecting the, the project package, because you've got three bids that are very close. We know the bid package was designed around what staff needs to make the plant continue to operate for the long term. We didn't add things, thinking we had extra money to spend. We, we designed what staff was looking for to make the plant operate. We know now also, because there's not phase two coming, there was, there might have been things that we picked off as we went in there, and said, "Well, before, we thought we might have another project in three years, maybe we do it then?" No, we're doing it all now, okay? Because not, we aren't doing another project for another ten years, hopefully of that nature, to upgrade for that process. So, that's the project we have in front of us, okay? Do, do you have questions, or we want to talk about what we're recommending, or is there anything else that anyone wants to add?
Let's, let's move to the recommendation, and then, then there may be questions.
Okay, okay. So, we are recommending a ward up to the low-responsive bidder, which is Magni Construction. Um, there, there's nothing in the bids that would make you reflect that there was something wrong with the bidding. You've got three bids that show up that are competitive, but that's basically what we're recommending, given, given all that background.
Thank you. Anything else? We'll open up for questions.
Um, so, the, the project will be about ten percent more than what we had envisioned two years ago, and, I think you indicated that, um, one of the main reasons for the increase is the, the change in steel and material pricing has, has gone up. Um, and that's, that's not good for us, but at the same time, a, a number of changes it looks like have been made over the last two years, so, we'll end up with a more efficient plant, a better product, a better project than we would have if we'd have built it two years ago then. So that, there's a blessing. So that, there's a blessing to that, too.
I, yes, I believe that's true, yes.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Craig.
Okay, so, thanks a lot, you guys, I appreciate the presentation. And there's been a good bit of discussion since we got the bid documents and, so there was a lot of looking at what would the options be. And I know that currently, we have the round glass-lined steel tanks out there doing basically part of this function. In that conversation then, we also met with other people in the industry that either, well mostly, that also construct and work on these facilities, to try to get smart, because as a council, we need to know what we're talking about, and this is an awful lot of money. And it's quite a bit over what the projection was, and I agree with Mr. Baricola, you know, I think it's understandable why a lot of these changes are in, but some of us actually went out and met Councilman Luzinski, Councilman Labatt and I, and then a member of the community went and tried to get smart about what's out here. And mostly because the, we looked at the cost per gallon to construct the square concrete or the rectangular concrete structure versus going in glass-lined steel similar to what we have. And there's a substantial difference in price between those vessels. So, with that, we gathered some more information, and then I sat down with Bob and Scott this morning, along with our city engineer and our city administrator, and we went through this again, okay? And one of my questions that I had with Bob and Scott is, is why can't we go round? Round is cheaper, you know, what's the issue here? And my initial comment, smart remark, was going to be that, at home, I have a round mixing bowl, not a square one. And Bob gave me, and Scott gave me, a pretty good background on what you're trying to accomplish with, at the stage that the sludge is at when it's put into this tank, and trying to violently mix it versus stir it. And so reflecting against two flat walls, I guess I understand that. But I asked Bob again the question, well, there's still a lot of difference in gallons, can you make that round tank work? Yeah, we could make it work, but I don't know if that's desirable. So, you know, one of the dilemmas that I have in this is that, you know, is there another place that we can trim costs even with the current bid? You know, is there a way that, are there things in this project under the current piece that maybe don't have to be the way they are? I know there's discussion about approved and not-approved metals, you know, aluminum and stainless steel and those types of things. I'm just asking the question, is there a way that we can relook at this and do some trimmings? And even as we go with an approved bid, can we trim and get this so that, you know, I assume we're going to have, this is going to be a classic project where we have change orders, you know, we always have change orders. We seem to be a city that invented change order, but I know we're not. You know, I just, I'm asking the question because I think it's due diligence. We had some very concerned people who are also business members of the community and taxpayers in the community, and understand this better than I do, that, you know, I need to ask these questions, and the council needs to ask these questions, and we need to have you answer them.
So under, virtually any project, but certainly a project of this size and complexity, there's always a discussion with the contractor about what we call means and methods. And this project has got a lot of options in terms of how we interact with staff and keep the plant running, and what they pictured, and maybe what they can say, if you could do this, we could save this. There might be some materials, like you said, that would be identified. We've not gone into that discussion with our contractor, but it would be a discussion we'd have with any contractor we'd have upon award, okay? To identify potential areas for even just expediting. Sometimes just being faster saves internal budget money, so.
Other questions? Or Jim and then Russ.
I was in that conversation with Craig, and one of my biggest concerns is it's already over budget. Coming from my business standpoint, I'm going to take, you know, as my business, when I look at a project, or I sit with my company, and I budget a new building, I build a budget $100,000. I have to stick to that budget, it means cutting stuff out or looking at a different way to do this. And when we, you know, we're starting out of the box, 10% over cost, before we get change orders. And then I have a member of the community saying that we could build this thing, you know, maybe a different style, 20% to 30% cheaper. I guess it hasn't been, I haven't had it justified to me why we need to spend the extra $2 million on the square box over the round box yet. And I know Craig and I have been talking about this, and, you know, right now, I'm not comfortable supporting something. We're starting over budget before we get change orders. You have 5% change orders, we've just blown this thing out of the water to our constituents. So, you know, at this point, with the conversations I've had last week and this week, you know, it's not being clarified to me why we are voting for something over budget. Because I go back to the private sector, we're over budget, we scale back, we don't spend. And I just, I can't justify that at this time yet.
Part of that would be, by going with the square concrete tanks, as Craig said, circular tanks, you mix around and around, square tanks, we mix this way. So, heavier solids are at the bottom, lighter solids are at the top. By mixing from up to top and around, you're able to get those all mixed back in. If you just go in a circle, you have to pump it from tank to tank to get that done. Plus, the concrete tanks, it's going to be 40, 50 years. Where the steel tanks, you'll probably be replacing those in 20, you know, maybe 25, plus.
So our current tanks have to be replaced in 10 years.
Well, there, go ahead, Bob.
I actually have, in the capital budget, next year, to spend $75,000 to reseal one of those tanks. And then in '21, also another $75,000 to do maintenance on the other one, so. And then there's also anodes for cathodic protection, so the tanks don't rust. Those are all wore out already, too, so we're looking at probably another $15,000 to $20,000 per tank in maintenance that we'll have to do on those regardless. And those are 17 years old. With the concrete tank, we're going to be looking at 40 to 50 years with zero maintenance to speak of, so.
The solids will not eat up this concrete if it's not proper.
No, that shouldn't be an issue on that, so.
With the rerotting stuff, that.
Yeah, no, no.
I think it's a reasonable question. I recall asking the same question when you presented the facilities plan, so.
And I'd just like to add a comment about the budget, you know, we, when we do the facility plan, there's nothing on paper yet, you know, we're taking a wild guess to try to get the best idea of what this project's going to be. And until you get it designed and get material lists together and labor and things like that, you don't really know what that is. It's a wild start, you know, if they say it was $9.5 million in the facility plan two years ago, there wasn't a pencil put to it yet until we, so that's some of the reason that we're probably higher. You know, we pulled in, initially, we were going to do this in two phases, and we were looking at $17 million over the two phases back when the facility plan was done. So, we're bringing other things in there, that's some of the reason the costs are coming up. So, it's, you know, it's not just that it's over budget, it's, we've changed the scope of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of questions, and I agree with Councilman Luzinski. I, too, cannot support a project that's 10% over budget at this point. I would like to see some sort of taking a fresh look at this, and I understand that we have stainless steel, and could stainless steel be replaced with aluminum in some areas, reducing the cost somewhat? I see in the memorandum that, I understand steel prices have been increased and with the tariffs and everything else, but we're looking at an 80% electrical cost greater than originally estimated? I mean, that's a significant number, 80% more than what was estimated. I know you made reference to, we've got to do some things to keep the plant operating while they make electrical changes, but 80% is 80%. In paragraph three, you mentioned that you've built some of these required rectangular storage facilities, designed. Where, I mean, when we talked to the local contractor, he was not aware of any location that had one. Can you tell me where there were, where some, and maybe the contractor, has the contractor built one of these before?
Magny?
Yes.
Yes, I believe.
As far as the difference between round and square, how much did, from going from round to square, how much additional cost was that by itself?
And John? I'd like to interject a little bit. Bob, I want you to explain the difference between the rectangular and the round tanks in the decanting process to get the, to the higher density of sludge, and then transferring it back into the round tank for actually keeping it mixed and discharging it to the field. So, that's an important part about this rectangular versus round treatment process.
We're using these tanks more than sludge storage. We're using them as a thickening process. And that's critical for us. And there's going to be four chambers in it versus one huge tank. It's all operational, what we can do to actually save money in time and expense and everything else on the downside of getting rid of this once it's thickened up and we have to land apply it. So we're, our intent is, on this tank, is we're going to be taking these 2% solids from our ATAD digestion system. We'll put it in the first cell, we'll decant it, let it get thick. At any point, we can just start that mixer, violently mix that tank, we can test it and see where we want to be for solids in that cell. Once that cell is full, we can move the second cell. And we will continue to do this until all the cells are full, and at that point, we would move it, violently mix it, move it over to the blue round tanks now. Then we have a 125-horse mixer in there that, it's very expensive to run. By doing this in the smaller tanks, we can move that over probably late summer, and we'll be running that mixer probably two months a year versus eight to 10 months a year in the round systems.
And that'll keep it suspended.
And once it's mixed up, again, we can keep it suspended in the blue ones with the current mix systems.
Just a note for the record and for the audience, when Kelly, Pat from Bolton passed out the paper, what that is, and he gave that to each of the council members, it's a list of 27 municipal and one industrial use, or the title is rectangular biosolid storage and dewatering tanks.
I guess the point I was trying to make, there are some real advantages to going to square versus round, and there's a $50,000 amount in there, is that all because of the change from round to square? The $50,000 savings, or?
That number is driven by the ability to properly decant before we land apply, okay? So now, they're able to mostly, but not always, get that. They can't use the entire tanks because they have to use them back and forth to mix them. Basically, it's like taking a cup of water and going back and forth to mix the two tanks, so they're never quite sure exactly how thick they are when they get that done. They see quite a bit of stratification in the larger tanks. So, all, was really trying to point out is, there's a valid reason why staff is trying to decant that liquid off. So when you ask to compare the two, you're not really doing an apples to apples.
Right.
You've probably got that, but that's.
Right. I would estimate that that $50,000 is low. I think we'll save more than that.
And so what I'm trying to come across is, how much is the additional cost versus the savings? And maybe the additional cost is worth it if we're going to be saving money in the, by going with this.
The long-term aspect of that, it comes into factor there, too. Like I say, we won't have any maintenance on these tanks for decades.
And, you know, it is, the bid is higher than the estimates by 10%. The question is, are steel prices going to be going down in the future? Is technology going to be going down? Are we going to save any money by delaying the project? And is this, is everything that we're asking for here, or included, necessary? And provide us with a system that is up-to-date and efficient and economical and will do the job? You know, we can maybe save capital expenditures, but the operating expenses will go up and we'll pay for it in the long term. And so the question is, what's the best use of taxpayer dollars? Pay now or pay later? And that's where we have to do the analysis. And I don't like paying 10% more than what the estimate, but that was a two-year-old estimate. And unless steel prices and other costs are going to go down in future years, we're going to be doing the project now. And the question is, what you're proposing, are these necessary items that will make a good plant, that will meet our needs for the long-term future? And if so, you know, I would favor the project. Like I said, I'm not one that likes to spend money, but sometimes it's better to spend money now and save it later.
And I'm with you, too. I wouldn't spend any money I didn't want to. I'm very strong believing that this is the project that we need, and I think it's very, very proper time to do it now. I think if we delay it, I don't see any better costs. I think we are risking a lot more costs in the future if we would have to rebid this or anything like that.
You said that the pump is a 125-horsepower pump, and that's extremely expensive to run. Is that based on fuel consumption, or?
It's electricity.
Electricity?
We, as a utility, large utility user, we pay a demand fee also. It costs us $1,100 to start that pump per month that it's running. So if we run it for 15 minutes, we're going to pay that $1,100 or not, so. And that's just, that's just the demand charge. Then you're running a 124-horse mixer and doing the wear and tear on it and everything else, so that pump is going to wear out if we're, if we can run that a fourth of what we normally would, we're saving tremendously on electricity.
So I understand the basic discussion of a round versus square rectangular. What about the alternative of a round versus a conical? Because sludge will separate the conical. In science, we use conical things to separate the sludge.
I think with the volumes we're talking about, the rectangular makes sense versus something like that, but, you know, even other costs, changing out the electrical, that electrical, a lot of that is 45 years old. You can't get parts for it anymore. We start breaking down, we're in trouble. And that's something that needs to be changed out. Can we do some things to save some cash? Yeah, I think we can. There again, we'll talk with the contractor after award and see if he has any thoughts. And, you know, there's some things that we could probably change in the metals, those things that, maybe some of the error controls we could look at and different things like that, but.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I appreciate, we've had a lot of discussion in the last week and some very valid weigh-ins, and I think a lot of education and a lot of good questions that have been asked and a lot of good input, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the time that staff spent this morning. And I came away from that meeting understanding where they're at with this. And I mean, with enough work and focus, you could make anything work. And I think in a lot of ways, they have, but I do understand and support the conversation and the idea that I got from Bob and Scott today, that this is what they're looking for, and I understand why they want it this way. You know, I sure wish the, you know, we could have come in and saved money on this. I mean, obviously, I'd like to have the contractor just want to do this at a break-even because we're great, but, you know, I do understand where they're coming from at it, and it was out on a fair bid, and it is what it is. And I do support what they're proposing.
Just a question on the change orders. What's the projection on cost savings? Do we have an idea, or? Or is it going to be a cost increase, or a wash, or?
Ideally, there would be no change.
I don't anticipate a cost increase.
I would think we can save some money. And we should, you know, once we, like John said, there's some means and methods we could discuss. There's some changes to maybe, you know, materials, access to some areas. You know, we're not going to save $4 million, be able to save 2, 3, 400, you know? And we'll know better, you know, once we're able to sit down with Magny and city staff and go over some of these items to see what we can, you know? Again, means and methods, he's built quite a few water wastewater plants, they might have some ideas which will help us understand a better way to save money for the city marshal.
One of the, one of the things with change orders is, is that we don't unilaterally get to make the decision to change the project, we have to have an agreement from the contractor to change the project. So if you're, if we're going to award the bid, we would need to have some agreement that the contractor is in agreement with the changes. Another question on the project is the cost volatility that you mentioned. I think a lot of cities are seeing the cost volatility and across the board, they're paying more than they thought. And I think back to a little bit on Saratoga Street, where we were concerned about the cost, and considering whether or not the project should be delayed, would it save us money or not? And it was, kind of looked at both ways, you might save money by delaying it, you might not. And to, you know, to get back to kind of the decision that, you know, for the council, a consideration would be, if you rejected all bids and rebid, is there a potential to get a lower cost? We talked about the PFA loan at 1%, there could be an increase in interest. There could be an increase in interest, which is unknown as well. However, if the project cost is lower, maybe that's a wash as well. So I'm just kind of curious on the change orders and that cost volatility. I think that's, that's something to think about.
Are there any other questions the council has?
Just two things. I look at the bids, they're very close bids. Is this usually the case for these types of project? You see this much closeness in the bids?
These were exceptionally close.
That's what I was thinking.
A few bids we'd seen before that were pretty tight also during that timeframe. We're seeing some lengthening out of that in bids recently.
And that's usually a good sign, the tightness in the bids.
It's a good sign that that's the price of that particular package.
Right. And as experts in this field, do you foresee down the line in a year or two or whatever, that technology is going to change things a lot and we're going to have new ways of doing this? Or is this pretty much going to be the standard for a while?
For the process that we have, this is a pretty up-to-date process we're implementing, particularly in the aeration control and that, this whole discussion about the sludge tank. Those are pretty up-to-date and designed to accommodate the future. So when we talk about that future, that 10-year thing we pushed out, that's going to be a nitrogen removal process that will require a different way of controlling the air that we are now starting to implement. Okay? So we've already started in that process. We'll be able to accommodate that when it comes.
So there's not necessarily a reason to delay it because of new technology coming out and we're building something that would be somewhat obsolete, so?
No.
John, just probably let's talk a little bit about the bids. As I say, they are very close. What's your experience with each of the bidders? You have three close bids.
We get bids from all, three of those bidders are experienced in water and wastewater treatment facilities.
All three have?
They all have that background.
We've worked with all three.
You have worked with them.
We're with a couple of them right now, so.
We're probably working with all three of them.
Yes, all three right now, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, Jim?
The only thing I wish we'd have seen more of, and maybe I missed it, is the cost savings of this over the course of 40 years, justify the extra several million round tanks. And not to say that it's a bad project, but I can't support the project simply because the overrun. I don't know, is it going to save us money in the long run? It very well may have. But that, I believe that has not been laid out to us as a council to see the cost savings. Like I said, I don't believe it's a bad project, but I don't see the cost savings there at this time. It'd be nice maybe to bring that forward in the future to show that there is going to be cost savings in the long run.
Very important.
I think when we had the two-step projects, the two different projects we were doing, was it your firm that put together the analysis and comparing the present values? And that was really helpful because, you know, we're comparing present value to future value amounts and you can't do that. You got to put them all in present value terms. And I felt that was very useful when you did that, when you compared the two different projects or the steps. I guess it was different projects we could do and we were evaluating which was the best way to go based on present values.
You did have a couple of options in the facility.
Yeah, the two different options, yeah. That was very useful.
So we appreciate the work that's been done by our engineering consultants on this project. We appreciate the staff work on this project. We appreciate also, I think, the good discussion the council has had. If there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion on this recommendation. I will make a motion to council to work the project.
Can I address the council, Mayor?
Yes, you can, but we have a motion and we'll have to have a second to that according to parliamentary procedure. Then I will certainly let you address the council, but we're right in the middle of a motion, so. Unless you want to withdraw your motion at this time. Yeah, I think I'll hold off on that. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, motion by John, seconded by Glenn.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I've got some handouts. Could you look at those? Would you look at those? Well, I guess I'd like to review, if I could, some of what I've written down on this project.
Give a few introductions or something, please.
Oh, sorry. I thought, yeah. My name is Kim Christensen. I own KHC Construction. I've got three of my employees with me tonight. Dave Rubin, who was out there and did one of the previous projects with one of our other superintendents. Derek, my son, and Jaleen, who is instrumental in helping put together the bids and run our company. As everybody knows, but we're about five, six blocks from the project site. I used to work for Robert Dale Car Company. I worked 21 years there. I've had KHC Construction right at the entrance to Schwan's Industrial Park for 20 years. And I've kind of have done a lot of different projects out there since the beginning of that wastewater treatment plant. I remember when it used to be the wastewater duck ponds, we called them, which are kind of behind us or across the railroad tracks. So I've got a lot of history out there. Bob knows me quite well. We've done several projects. The latest out there that we did was probably the sludge project is the ATAD, which actually makes the thicker sludge, which is what's going in these tanks. The tanks that he refers to, the round tanks, the two that are out there, they're about 1,637,000 gallons each, and there's two of them. The proposed rectangular tank is 2 million gallons. So what we were proposing, because the, as you can see by my letter there, is we were proposing a complex of four round tanks. Little background on the concrete. One of the concrete tanks that's part of this project that's got to get recoded has a bunch of crazing on it and it should really be repaired and it's going to get recoded. And that's not quite 20 years old. So some of the same things that you see with the cathodic protection and possible repair on the glass line tanks also has to be done on the concrete tanks. If you look at this, it's about a $3 million savings. Plus, the engineering inspection services would be less because the timeframe to build those four tanks and a gallery, which will do all the storage, it'll do all the decanning, and the same exact system that's installed in the rectangle tanks. The manufacturer is Parksen and they put it into the round tanks also, same exact system. So the mixing, what they do on the round tanks is they add baffles and the baffles will help create the upflow that they need for the new mixing systems. Probably one other thing that should have been done in this project is probably add those baffles to those two existing tanks. And then Bob would probably get better mixing with those if he chose to. The other thing that's out there, so that's a $3 million savings. $50,000 a year, you need 60 years to recover that. Not five years or 10 years, 60 years. So the mixing is the same. The decanning system can be accomplished the same way. That's how he's decanning now off those tanks. The next major item, safety concerns. The round tanks are 50 foot across and they put manways on them. So you technically don't have to go in there. These tanks are like 90 feet long and they put one hatch, one round manway on the very end. So if they have to get in there, it's, you know, it's a confined space and you go through quite a requirement to deal with that. The other thing is, is the walkways alone, just for that tank, are 415,000. You can buy one of these tanks for 500,000. So we've got the gold-plated stainless steel walkways. Everything out there I've done in aluminum. And aluminum stands up fine. But in this job, there were no alternates. There's no alternate for aluminum. The negotiating with the low bid contractor after the fact, I wouldn't recommend that. But you can do whatever needs to be done, but. So a couple of other things. There was seven addendums issued on this project. I've been doing this 40 years and I've never seen seven addendums. The electrical, to answer that question, it wasn't even issued with the original plans and that's why they withdrew the whole bid package and postponed it two months. So it wasn't quite, you know, totally thought through. The other thing that's out there is the trickling filters. That part of the project's about 3/4 of a million dollars. And there were no alternates. You know, you're replacing a roof, you're putting new media in there for 300 grand and it might not even need to be. So if you were to rebid the project, you could use these as alternates and then you could evaluate whether you wanted to do that work or not do that work. But with 3/4 of a million, and if you read some of the description, you might not even need to do that. And there's no mechanism for deleting that out of this project fairly. So that was, on the second page, I listed some of the round biosolids projects. If you notice, Kelly handed out this list of biosolids tanks. There isn't one single project on there that has what Marshall's has. I built New Ulm. The mixing didn't work. They added mixing later. And the bottom line is, those walls are 20 foot high. The ones on this project are 30 foot high. And the thickness is 2'6". And like New Ulm, they're like 1'4". The base labs on this are 35 inches and the ones on those are way less. So this whole thing is, it's a monster. I've been doing this forever and it's, they haven't ever designed anything that I'm aware of. And I bid Wyndham, I know that. I did St. James. I know all of these projects that are listed on here for the most part, probably half of them. And there aren't any with a whole gallery with these walkways and all this stuff on the outside of them, so. What I would do if I were a council is I would rebid the project with the contractor's option. I would address the four round tank option. And I'm pretty sure we can get everything Bob needs with his decanning, his storage and his mixing with these round tanks, with some minor modifications possibly. And then he could downsize to a 20-foot-high wall and a reasonable tank. I did the aeration tanks out there and none of those walls are that thick. The base labs aren't that thick. The rebar, this rebar and everything in this is, it's way over the top. And the stainless steel, like I said, it's ridiculous. Everything out there is aluminum. Bob said himself, he said, "Well, I don't know." And then I begged the engineers, I said, "Let's have, you know, let's come out with an addendum and change the materials. We can save some money." But they didn't do it, so. It's my opinion that the only fair way to do this and to entertain these material changes, because you don't want to tell me you're going to entertain material changes and you're going to entertain 3/4 of a million dollars with a deducts with another contractor after the fact. It wouldn't quite be fair in the bid process. And you've got public money here, a lot of public money. You've got wage scales. It would be just not the right thing to do. So I will guarantee you that this option would save not 2 million, $3 million. And I've reviewed this with some people and I think they concur that that could be the savings. As far as the local involvement with this project, the way it was, Magny boasted 2.8 million. Well, first of all, I'm based in Marshall, so the whole amount of the contract, but there's 8.5 million of local involvement, whether it's Buffalo Ridge, Meyer Electric, Bendrite Fabrication, you've got fuels, you've got insurance down the line. So the involvement here is way, way over the top, so.
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, any questions?
How long do we have before we have to make a decision on this, on accepting the bids?
Dennis, that may also be a question for you. Kim also brought up the question.
Usually it's 90 days, I think, but I, or is it 60 in this one? Six.
From the submit all the bid.
Correct. And that was April 16.
Any other questions for Mr. Christensen?
Thank you very much.
I mean, this is new information and interesting information. I guess I'd like staff to look at that and our consultants to look at that. And you, so what's your response? We're talking big savings here and do you have a response?
Address the stainless versus aluminum.
The one thing I did notice is the sheet you handed us had rectangular ones and it had like Renville and Sioux Center, Iowa. And on his handout, he's got Sioux Center and Renville as round ones.
They've got both.
Okay, they have both of them, okay.
So much of what we did, particularly with the stainless, the way it was designed, we have structural implications with the stainless that we couldn't completely support with aluminum, okay? We could have done a mix of materials. We kept it clean and went with the stainless materials in this installation. Similar with some of the discussion that you just heard about the size of the walls and the amount of rebar. Our structural codes have changed over the last few years and drive some of that, okay? Soils drive some of that. So to do just a comparison like that, you'd have to really dig down, but we designed to the conditions on the site, okay?
As far as the size of our structure, there are facilities out there that have sizes similar to ours, so we're not breaking new ground with the size.
No.
And they've been used and tested and evaluated.
There's no issue with the construction of that size. So in all those issues, there's a little more to it than just, well, we could do this or that, right? I mean, there's some design impacts that we, as the engineer, had to take into an address, right?
You know, the aluminum, we met with Bob and staff and discussed aluminum versus stainless steel. I had a long conversation with our structural, who, you know, we've been working with them probably 30 years, okay? And, you know, again, like John said, codes have changed as far as concrete reinforcement. Same thing with steel and aluminum. 20 years ago, you said, "I could have done it aluminum." Nowadays, I can't because a bridge fell down a minute. Nowadays, I can't because a bridge fell down in Minnesota. So things have changed. You just can't, you know, say, "We did it 20 years in aluminum, we want to do it now." Now, I had a, well, almost a 45 minute conversation with my structural trying to figure out what we could do to make aluminum work. Because Mr. Christensen had contacted me and said, "Can you make it work? I've done all kinds of aluminum out there." But again, it's been time, rules have changed, regulations have changed, lawsuits have happened. So to just say we can do it, we really can't. I mean, like John said, we could have do, we could have done a mix and then we're trying to make sure we get, you know, proper places and what have you. So we did, most of the questions that, you know, were brought up here, we did discuss. We've discussed it with staff before and after the bid. And again, we're based on what staff, you know, is looking at to make sure they can do their treatment process the most effectively is what we came up with.
Well, any question? Kim kind of touched on this. If we start changing this to bring the costs down, once you made these change orders, we've changed the scope of work. So at what point do we say, "Well, maybe this thing should be rebid because we are changing the scope of work" and add in the addendums? See where we can shave off? Because again, you know, we have one gentleman saying he can save us $3 million. To me, that's a significant savings. And then you guys are saying, "Well, this, this some works better." But now I'm told, "Did this agitator fail in New Ulm?"
They had a different type of agitator.
But they did have a failure in New Ulm on this type of structure.
Well, they had...
It wasn't the one we're putting in now.
Not the one we're putting in now. They put in what we put in now after the fact. They had mixers and the mixers did an okay job. So we put in what we're putting now in New Ulm and it's working fine.
But as we try to beat up this contractor, we're changing the complete, we could completely change the scope of work.
And we're not changing the scope of work.
Our intent would only be a decision of means and methods and a value to the city to change means or methods.
But I would change the scope of work.
Any change order ends up changing your scope of work. So we're not, I'm not proposing we're looking for that, but it comes along, that's what comes along. You could get something completely out of the blue that comes along.
We'll entertain other questions for the consultants, consulting engineers, and then we'll move to discussion on the motion.
You mentioned that there's some cities that have both round and square tanks. So what did we hear from those cities as far as their experience?
We're seeing them go the same way we are where they had existing round. There's a couple that we went round, but we weren't trying to mix them anymore. We're just letting it sit. But most of them have a round or are going to some rectangular tanks for dealing with that mixing issue.
And they're glad they've made that move?
That's what we're hearing, yes. We've also done quite a few where all we did was basically blow some air in it. Those don't mix as well. We didn't go with that system here. We went with the one we're going with because we feel it does a better job with that violent agitation that Bob was talking about.
The last thing here, so this information that's presented to us tonight, you're familiar with this information and the city staff is and our consultants have seen this and are familiar with this. This is not new to you.
We've had this discussion, say, about the trickling filter and what we were doing there. If we're going to take that trickling filter apart and use it, then we need to do the work we're doing. It's going to fall apart within some timeframe that we're trying to get out past right now, right? So when are you going to do that? You're going to wait for it to fall in or tackle it? Now, while we have one that's still working.
My concern on the trickling filters is, yeah, it's a large part of the project. In 10 years from now, we may not need them. We don't know that yet. But if we can get 10 years out of a rehab of a trickling filter, that's not money thrown away either, so. It's far enough out there where money spent is not thrown away. We're going to have a reliable system for the next eight to 10 years at least on that, so.
Okay. You've been working on this for a while, as far as design. Would it be safe to say that, you know, the options that the KHC has brought up tonight, you've looked at or, for whatever reason, decided to go with the method you're doing now? Or what, I mean, a little bit is kind of the round, square, you know, 3 million, not 3 million, you know?
We spent a fair amount of time on the round, square discussion and came to this conclusion about compartmentalizing this the way it is, okay? We spent time on the trickling filter we discussed. We have spent a lot of time evaluating what the best option is to do what the city staff is looking for on this project.
Kind of going along with that, Bob, is you've, you've had these options in the past, you're familiar with them. And this is your recommendation?
Yeah, so, you know, we went round and around on different things and like I said, if we didn't think we needed it and we didn't think this was the best method, we went and suggested it. And so like I said, I strongly recommend this proposal. It's things that we need. It's not, and they may not be the cheapest. I'll say that, yeah, if we could save $3 million, that's nothing to sneeze at, but the system that we're proposing is what's going to work for us and it's going to have long-term effect on energy savings and everything else at that treatment plant.
Bob, just a clarification of my own mind. You said, you made the reference of 40 years lifespan for the rectangular tank. Current tanks are 17 years old and you've got to do some repairing. After they're repaired, what's the life expectancy of those round tanks?
It won't be double, again.
Well, it adds another 10 years.
It'd probably get 10 more years out of it.
So you've got 27, 30 years to that round tank?
Yeah.
Now, are you going to go on record as saying that we probably won't have any repairs to that rectangular tank in 40 years?
I would say it'd be very, very minimal.
They'll probably coat it once.
So there'll be maintenance items and repairs to the rectangular tank just as they are the round tanks?
Yeah.
I mean, maybe not to the same extent?
Yeah.
But, okay.
And then the other thing you should think about is some of these tanks they currently are continuing to use are 45, 50 years old. You know, we use 40 to 45 for projection. There's many tanks, you know, concrete tanks that could last, you know, 50, 60 years with proper maintenance. Every 20 years, you go in and recoat them to make sure there's no damages. And that's just part of his normal O&M expenses.
And my last question, Mr. Christensen made a reference to the 20 foot high walls versus 30 foot. Is there a reason why you wanted, did I miss that? Is 30 foot high walls?
We went to a height that matched some of the existing, blue tanks are taller than 20 right now, those existing ones.
Could be good by with 20.
Well, we would cut our storage capacity down and we'd get a wider footprint, right? So...
Less than the cost?
Well, I doubt it because we'd have more footing. And, you know, we are doing some excavation on subsoils there to take care of the footing problems. So we were trying to keep it as compact as we could. It's hard to say when you're building a 2 million gallon tank and you've got that kind of footing, but we were trying.
I look at a $3 million saving just on round versus rectangular. Those are significant dollars. I would like to drive a new car every year, every few years too, and I want the best that I can get. But, you know, and I agree, Bob and his staff do a great job. Mr. Bear Coler says, "Do we pay now or do we pay later?" That's the synopsis that we have to figure out.
What you're not clear on here is, you'd have to bid this again. You'd have to see how the bidding atmosphere was at the time.
Take a risk on that.
Steel tanks are very susceptible to the steel cost issues that we were discussing. So I can't predict how good today's price is and by the time we bid this sometime next year, what good that, I don't know that. What would you pay in inflation? You'll have, you know, other costs, staff costs, engineering costs that tie into there.
So do you think that we would not be able to, if we decided to rebid it, we would not be able to rebid it until next year?
I think by the time we redesigned all that, it would take us that long to get approvals and get them redesigned on, yes.
One of my additional questions.
Late this year to early next year, I'm sorry.
And maybe Craig could answer this. You've talked about improvement of technology and everything. I think Mr. Bear Coler talked about that. Craig, can you address, are we talking about any legal things that you know of that are coming, maybe come with MPCA coming down the tube that we should be aware of when we're considering these things?
Well, I think in fairness of the, for the good of the group, I don't do wastewater enforcement anymore. I did, you know, in my early stages with pollution control. I do some basic operator training and participate in their annual conferences in my current position as emergency response. I think that the contractor, the consultants answered the question about the, being able to take phase two out of this because they were able to move some things down the road. And I appreciate that. The agency has been doing a lot of looking at which part of these standards because a lot of this puts a huge strain on the ability to finance these projects also. And they're trying to balance the PFA funds and where's the cost benefit and to the communities because they do recognize the fact that every time they change the standard, they create a huge suck of projects and resources. So, you know, I think that, you know, and I said this early in our meetings and I appreciate all the time that Mr. Christensen and his folks put together to this to help try to bring us up to speed and inform us of what his opinions and options are. But, I mean, I leave the engineering to the engineers and we've got probably the best operating staff there. I'll stand them up to anybody in the state and probably in the 11 states, which you guys work on 11 state standards. So things that our consulting engineers present us have to be, if they're not approved methods and approved structure or concepts in the 11 state standards, they're going to have to get approved as an alternate. Now, the agency also reviews our facility and that's part of what they're talking about. If we make substantial change to this, it has to be resubmitted because when we get our permit from the Pollution Control Agency, which is effectively a national permit that the state has delegated authority to do, it's a permit to construct and operate. So they had to apply for this. They have to submit plans and specs to the agency for review, comment and approval. So before this, if we make significant changes, before this goes back out for bid, it has to go back through that approval process and get reblasted.
Thanks for the clarifications on some of the questions. So I want to move us to now discussion on the motion that is on the table. Actually, we did pull it back so he didn't...
Pull it back so you could have...
So let's put a motion on the table. I will make a motion to award the bid, award the project as recommended to Magny Construction. Motion by John, is there a second? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
I was going to ask our consultants up here before they left that, so there's a $3 million amount out there. And he made the excellent point that if we're saving $50,000 a year, it takes 60 years to get back that $3 million. And I mentioned before that one of the different proposals you presented to us a while back had two options and you put them in present value terms. Was there a reason that you maybe didn't do something like this as far as giving the city the two bid options, the round versus the square? Because it, like I said, 60 years to recover the investment seems like a long time. And that's not in present value terms.
No, and so what you're asking, no, typically at bid time, we progress to a point where we've designed the project that was intended to be designed. You know, unless there were a lot of alternates to sort out, we don't usually prepare that present worth. What I can tell you, okay, so if, say, by doing this decanting, doing other things that are saving, roughly every $60,000 of operating expense you save, you know, in that process is worth about a million dollars of capital cost in our loan process, okay? So every million dollars cost is about $60,000 a year. So if we can implement something that cuts costs in terms of the operating, you could try to balance that against the capital cost that it takes, okay? I don't know if that completely doesn't answer you. That's how you get to that present worth discussion because you're borrowing money to do it also, so you've got that to build into the process.
I'm a numbers guy and like I said, is the only difference basically, the round versus the square that we're talking about, everything else could be the same as far as the project is concerned. It's just a matter of whether we go with round tanks or square.
Well, again, we designed what staff said they needed to keep the plant running the way we want it run. So there's not, I mean, unless we go and start cutting things out that they wanted, everything else was there. And the only real way you're going to know if you saved that is if you go and design and bid two completely separate pieces to that project.
And also now, you have...
Yes. Bob, could you come up for another minute? If in fact we went to redesign, I will tell you that we will not have two or three or four more tanks, round tanks like we have now. They really do need to be designed to be able to decant like Bob wants and to be able to keep the solids in suspension before they're put back. I don't, they certainly may be able to do that with baffling and pumping, but you can't do it in the round tanks that we have. Two years ago, we started to discuss additional big round tanks. And Bob, I want you to comment on that because the management of the sludge out there is more important than the type of structure we have out there. You can design that structure, but it will not be like the round tanks that we have, so...
Now, there again, I haven't seen the baffling in round tanks. If that's an option that's out there, maybe it is. I know currently our tanks, we just cannot do it with the way we're operating. And, you know, the blue tanks actually serve a pretty good life. I'm not going to complain about them at all, you know, so. I'm not saying that it's not possible to do it, you know. There again, I don't know if the numbers on the actual design is going to come in. There's going to be a lot more expenses redesigning everything. The timeframe is going to be, it could be an issue on some of the things where some of this project, we're on our last leg and we're holding it together with Band-Aids. But, so, you know, timing for portions of this project are critical. Right now, I don't know if we'll have enough sludge storage to make fall because of the wet spring we have. We haven't been able to land apply it all, so, you know. Timing is critical and I just don't see where we're going to save any money by redoing this.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. You guys stay up there. And again, I want to say that I appreciate the amount of time and energy that Mr. Christensen and his folks put into helping us understand this and look at what the options are. With that, you know, I did ask Bob and Scott from Wastewater and Glenn from Engineering and Ms. Hanson to spend some time this morning and I felt like I beat them up for about an hour. And I think we asked some tough questions and Bob and Scott were very adamant and very thorough about describing why they felt that the square or rectangular tank, that having that distinct difference in edges and the mixing system and what they're trying to do with developing that sludge and processing it out. These guys are experts. Our engineers are experts. Kim is an expert, our, you know, low bidder's an expert. I mean, there's a lot of good opinion here. And I went into that meeting this morning thinking, "You guys have to..." And they did. They have to sell me on this concrete tank. And they did. I mean, they changed my mind on this. And, you know, Kim makes a very compelling case for how this thing goes, but looking at what Bob and Scott are talking about and how they want to run the facility, I always feel as a council member, my first order is to protect the public and to give them the best we can with our money and spend their money right. And then secondly, it's to give our staff enough of the tools and what they believe they need with a good informed decision to give us the service that they need to do to provide that for the city. And this is an important piece. It's one of our single biggest investments we make in our community is that part of that infrastructure. And, you know, I really appreciate the strong inputs that everybody's given, but in that hour this morning, and we had a pretty good discussion and it was pretty detailed. They convinced me that this is the way that we need to go. Do I wish the bids were different? Absolutely. I always wish we could get a better deal, but it is where it is.
Other discussion on the motion.
One last time on, so it's not usual, it's something that normally is not down where you have the two options, round versus square, I mean, and put it out for bids that way?
We would usually make a decision based on what we wanted that process to do, not just kind of randomly because we went through that discussion about whether we were going round, rectangular. So it's not just cost, it's about how does it work and does it work the way we want it to?
John, I think what you're saying, if I can maybe interpret that, is you did not design this for lowest capital cost and the investment. You'd design this for the process over the next multiple decades, what you're trying to do.
True.
And try to get that. And the outcome is the capital investment. It's not looking at the capital investment first and designing the process.
That's true.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I have one question. I've been kind of silent, but I'm going to redact it.
I have one question. I've been kind of silent, but I'm going to redact it. I have two questions. Number one, how do you clean a rectangular tank? It's got corners. Number two, is the facility, the way it's designed now at the proposed price, able to accommodate extra capacity? Because hopefully, we grow. I don't want to be sitting back here in 10 years, or 15 years, or 20 years, saying we didn't build a big enough facility, and we've got to go into another $30 million facility.
I can't tell you 20 years from now, you know, where we're going to be. You know, we've done estimates and stuff like that. With the industries that we have, we're talking about the sludge treatment. We may have a major impact by one of our industries that will give us less sludge. So, we don't know that yet until they get their permit and decide which way they're going. You know, there could be one or two big impacts like that could affect us. Right now, that extra $2 million will give us the operating capacity that we have, that we can operate and manage this thing the way we need to. I can see it for the next 20 years. If nothing changes, we'll be fine on capacity. Just an example, since we've got our phosphorus limit, we're treating down to one part per million phosphorus. Our solids production has gone up 40% in the last two and a half years. So, and that's just by a limit put on us, removing more phosphorus and adding...
The other question was on cleaning a...
Cleaning, it'll be no different than the other ones. You know, I think Kim alluded to entering a 90-foot tank. Our current tanks are 101-foot with one hatch in them. We have to deal with confined space entry and the safety that goes along with it. And so, they have sloped floors to a sump. So, you know, by rights, if we can get that mixing system working, you can add thinner stuff in there, mix it up, wash the floor, and then come back to the pumps.
Thank you.
And Craig?
Just kind of one other thought on the capacity piece, because I just want to speak from the regulatory or the demander side of that, is that there's a certain amount of capacity that has to be in the plant, kind of rule of oil, that you have to have some predicted future. So, part of the magic ball thing that communities have to do when they design and permit these is have some reserve capacity. There's two pieces to measure that on how Marshall has done. Number one is even during the really extreme high flows we've had almost for the last 12 months, because we've really been in this wet cycle since the middle of last June. All the predictors, all the meteorology people that monitor what we're doing, including the Corps of Engineers and others, say that we're off the charts, right, Mr. Mayor? I mean, we are off the charts. They're recalculating the models. Marshall and Bob and his team, right on the threaded edge here in March, but they were able to treat everything that came to the plant. Number two is, is when the current design of the plant was built back in the 90s, there was an anticipation of a pretty significant industrial user that then looked at their costs, really after the project was approved and put into place, that pulled a whole bunch of capacity need back by doing their own pre-treatment, because they wanted to stay under that 400 milligrams per liter of solids to keep our, the BOD, to keep off of our bump. But because of the changes, and almost actually, thank God they did that, because of changes of the requirements, we still had the solids capacity, because Marshall got other limits put on where we had to remove more, creating more bio solids. So, that's really a hard thing to estimate, and some of it, we just got lucky on, because we would have been in a project ahead of time had they stayed on us as a full user.
Mr. Mayor, as a procedural point, just a question. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is that correct? We're in a discussion. Would it be possible to table this and have the architects, engineers, and the staff meet with the contractor and to see if there's some savings that could be had, and come back and award these bids at the next meeting?
There is a motion to table. That would be a primary motion, so that would then supersede the main.
Because if, I mean, all of us are concerned with costs, and we're looking at 10% overrun, could staff, engineers, contractor, look at this total project and say, can we, I don't want nickel and dime things, but is there some savings somewhere that we could maybe possibly have, and come back and award the bid at the next meeting?
Dennis, you can correct if I misstated that parliamentary procedure.
No, I, a lot of that's what's been happening since the bids were received April 16th. I think we left that bid meeting. I know some calls were made to Mr. Christensen. He had some input as to the size of the storage facility. I left for a vacation. I came back fully expecting the recommendation to be reject, let's start over. But after the discussions with staff and with consultants, I think here's where we are.
And that's fine, Dennis. I'm saying, say with the same plan, but are there, is there room for savings in some area?
You have to award a contract before you have those discussions.
Other discussion on the motion?
Just a couple other things. I mean, part of what we're trying to, you know, not that it matters, but as Administrator Hanson pointed out, that in June, our interest rates could go up to 1.3%. We're at 1 now. Inflation, we know that's a big factor. They bid a job in Laverne, and it was $3-plus million over the engineer's estimate. And again, they're saying a lot of it was due to iron and steel. Suppliers right now are saying, look for a 10% increase within the next two to four weeks, possibly, maybe six, just due to the revised tariffs. So, you know, we can sure put it off and rebid. We might save money, but we're not going to save $3 million, okay? Because we're probably, by the time we rebid everything, we're going to, you know, and higher interest rates, it could easily, you know, take a million away. And if we get another 10% inflation, that could be another million. You know, I'm not saying we can't do that. It's just that, just saving $3 million, I don't know that we will. Plus, we won't give the plant what they want for operations.
Because I'm not looking at saving three. I'm looking at saving at least one, one or two, one and a half, if we could.
And Sharon?
I just want to state on this interest rate projection, that is a guess, because if you look at history, and I haven't gone back far enough, back in fiscal year 2017, PFA loan interest rate was 1%. It hasn't changed.
Right.
So, to say it's all of a sudden going to change, it could.
Yes. And I'm not saying it will.
And cost volatility could change up or down.
Yep.
That's kind of the gamble or the decision the council has to make.
But PFA is not bond money. PFA is a revolving loan, correct, that's been ceded by the general fund. So, as projects pay themselves, pay the loan back, that's money back available to be used again out of the pool, and the interest rate is really a cost of administration, right?
Yes.
It's how the government, it's how the state fills its need back to administer this. So, it's really not interest. It's money that you're paying the administration fee to borrow out of the pool, pay it back to the pool, and somebody else goes in and grabs the money you paid back and uses it for their project. So, it's really a seeded pot that every once in a while, the legislature and their wisdom will throw some more seed in there to get projects to, additional projects to move.
Other discussion on the motion?
I just have one more, one comment, and we keep talking about tariffs and steel. This project's built out of American steel, so the tariffs did not have affected as much. And it's been released from the government that they're going to drop tariffs on the Mexican and Canadian steel. So, I believe your steel prices are not going to fluctuate. I mean, keep throwing tariffs out there, that's a moot point. Tariffs, I'm seeing my steel prices go down. So, I mean, it's, we're using American steel, so tariffs.
Other discussion on the motion?
So, I appreciate all this very wonderful conversation, but here's what it comes down to. I'm not an engineer. I'm a doctor. So, I've got to trust our consultants, that they've done everything, and they had the input from Mr. Christensen. And I trust Bob and Scott because they live here, they're running our plant, they're going to take care of ourselves, because what affects us affects them. It's a tough call. I don't like spending $14 million. I hate it. I think it sucks. But I'm a conservative devil, so I'm going to trust that if you guys, I mean, this is your credibility as consultants. So, I'm trusting that with everything you've put in and with all the conversations staff and consultants have had, that you're leading us down the right way, because it's their credibility. They want to stay in business and do it again. So, I'm going to, begrudgingly, I'll probably support this, because I think that you've done your due diligence. I think that we put the conversations in beforehand, and we've hashed out things that can be hashed out. So...
Other discussion on the motion?
Just one last comment here. Are we getting a Cadillac when a Chevrolet will do?
No, I don't believe so, because these are all pretty basic structures, right? Again, designed to intent.
I guess I'm talking in terms of the square versus the round. If both will do the job and one costs substantially less, is it worth the extra cost? Are we going to have better treated water? And is it worth the money? And I'm a numbers guy, and I'm looking at the present value of those. And to me, unless I have different numbers, it doesn't look like the present values of the square rectangular tank is less than the present value of the round tanks. I think economically, it looks like the round tanks is the better way to go.
So, what's not being addressed is how it impacts operations and what that cost might be, okay?
But I'm talking about that in present value terms.
You don't actually have the actual number in front of you. You have another estimate, okay? You have the actual numbers here in front of you today. Whether you'd see that much savings or not when you rebid that, well, that's anybody's guess at this point. So, you're really not comparing, you've got a real cost at $14 million versus some other estimated. Doesn't take into account extra engineering costs, your cost of money, all your other, all your other present worth items that you've been talking about?
And it's probably not a fair comparison, but it'd be like, you know, if I'm going to haul my load of liquid, do I take the tanker, or do I take the dump truck? I can haul the liquid in the dump truck, but I'm not supposed to, and it doesn't work real well. So, I mean, there's no such thing as a Cadillac in the wastewater industry. You either have the process you want or not. They don't build Cadillac systems, because it's all with public money. And I guarantee you, the private industry doesn't build Cadillacs either, because it is a cost of doing business, and everybody hates it. It's the dirty little secret that's the end of the pipe that's required, because we all want clean water, and we want clean land, and we want healthy environment. And it's, you don't sell wastewater treatment. It's an enterprise fund that we recover the cost to operate, because everybody needs it. There are no Cadillacs in this business. That's not a comparison.
You're saying it's a crappy deal no matter what.
It's a crappy deal no matter what. And you can get it to run uphill, but you need a really big pump, and that's as much of an engineer as I am.
Okay, other discussion?
But I assume that there's cities out there that are still building round tanks. And if they're still building round tanks, they may be, they must be doing the job, otherwise they wouldn't be using them.
I guess what we've been trying to explain, we have gone away from those generally, okay? And we're using them where they are. There are occasions where all you're really doing is making a wide spot to dump something, and then we go round. The clarifiers are round, because round clarifiers are more efficient process-wise than rectangular clarifiers too. But it's all a process-type decision about where we went with that.
So, you'd say the overwhelming trend is square is the future, round is going to go?
That's what we've been going with in terms of getting things, when we need to get things mixed and taken care of. That's where we're going with that.
Other discussion on the motion?
All right, we should call the question.
We have two choices, Jim. If we call the question, that takes a separate vote. We could simply move to a vote.
Let's just move to a vote.
If there's no objection, I will move to a vote. Open voting. Close the voting. The motion does pass. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. We've got items up on the screen on the consent agenda. They include a, consider the joint powers agreement with Minnesota Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force. Consider the resolution revoking the conditional use permit at 1002 Columbine Drive. Consider the approval of the resolution authorizing the transfer enclosure of the Capital Project Fund 428. Consider the request of Marshall Downtown Business Association for Crazy Days Thursday, July 18. Consider the request of Southwest Minnesota State University for Homecoming Parade Saturday, October 12, 2019. Consider the application for the on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Marshall Area Chamber of Commerce for August 14, 2019. Consider the venue change of application for the exempt permit for Pride and Tiger Foundation for July 15, 2019. And then finally, consider the approval of project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of a separate discussion?
Number eight, please.
Any other item? If not, is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number eight. Russ?
Just clarification. For the short time I was sitting in, sat on the planning commission, I believe our engineering office always told me that a conditional use permit could not be revoked. It always stayed with the property. In fact...
Eight or seven?
I have eight on my, did seven, did new agenda come up? Sorry, got switched. Then it was number seven.
Well, let's still have the discussion. It's already been acted on, but...
And I was just curious. I just want a clarification, because we even talked about that most recently with the dog treats. If we granted the conditional use permit, it stayed with the property. So, Dennis, I guess maybe I'm looking for some kind of a clarification.
Thank you, Mayor Council. That's correct. It cannot be revoked by somebody else's wishes. But according to Dennis, the clarification, some point before, if the, if the holder of the conditional use permit wants the council to revoke it, then it's the wish of the holder of the...
Okay, so when you've said in the past, Ilia, that conditional use permits cannot be revoked, then it can be revoked if the owner chooses to revoke.
That's our understanding. That's what Dennis...
Either the owner revokes it, or the conditions are violated.
Violator, then the council can revoke it. Correct. Okay.
You good with that?
Yep, I'm good.
Well, then, let's go ahead.
Quick comment on that, Dennis. So, in the future, this is the way it would be handled. Is it possible to include as a provision in the conditional use permit that anytime the owner wants to, they can revoke it? They could automatically revoke it and wouldn't have to come back to council, or would it still have to come back?
I would say it still has to come back here, because this is a recorded document in the courthouse. We need some formal action to authorize the removal of that.
So, we wouldn't save anything by putting that provision in the conditional use permit, you're saying?
And Steve?
Well, I'm reading off the League of Minnesota Cities right now. It says, when the property is sold, the new landowner will have the continued right to the conditional use permit, so long as the conditions are met. A city can revoke a conditional use permit if there is not substantial compliance with the conditions, as long as the revocation is based on factual evidence after appropriate notice and hearing. So...
But in this case, there is no violation. It's just the holder.
But there's still not an appropriate notice and hearing. So, that'd be the one thing, is do we need to have the notice and hearing?
Notice to the holder of the permit.
But in this case, the holder of the permit is requesting...
Right. This is the one who is asking to revoke it.
Thank you.
So, we still need to take action on agenda item number eight then.
By action, or consent item number eight, transfer of funds.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. This time, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. I'm going to reconvene the meeting.
Thanks, Kyle.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mayor.
We are on agenda item number 14. The agenda item number 14 is the chip sealing on various city streets. The action item here, this was tabled at the last regular council meeting, the action item would be to remove it from the table. I'd entertain that motion.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. So then that brings us to agenda item number 15, chip sealing on various cities' streets. There's a resolution recommended that would accept the bid and award the contract. Glenn, I'll let you start.
Thank you, Mayor Council. The thing that we wanted to take a look at was what the recommendations are by the experts in the field for doing seal coating. And when we did check on it, there is a large variety of recommendations by various cities and Department of Transportation as far as the best method of seal coating. But we'll start with this. All of them recommend seal coating. And that's a maintenance item that's done regularly, historically. But there's been a lot of changes to that. Oil types, chip types, chip sizes, lots of different things for chip sealing. And the most recent one was District 8. Our district for Mendoc has now had significant discussions about the best time to seal is right after the new surface is put down. So it's a cost right away, but it minimizes oxidation of the oils and puts a new skid resistance on right away for the public. All the other entities that I talked with, the City Engineers Association of Minnesota and other Mendoc districts, do it later. And I'm saying three years, five years, seven years. Some don't do it anymore. And it's a cost, but it's a maintenance cost. So that's what we've had historically is utilizing a seven-year after-new construction installation of a seal coat. I'm not so sure that that's the best method. I'm thinking that five years or three years would be better, but we just don't have the money to do that at this time. So after that review and discussion, I am recommending that we award this one with continual review of the best methods of applying seal coats. Recommend approval for this year.
Questions? You know, just make a comment. And while Glenn and Jason, I certainly respect your professional opinions, my objection at the last time, which led to it being tabled, was because of the Mendoc research on Highway 19 where they concluded it made no difference on extending the life. And I realize that's one study that it was on a highway, it wasn't on a city street. My preference would be to, if there's a question about the value of that maintenance investment, to redirect that into something that we know works and that's overlays. Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glenn, I just have a... You know, I agree with what you said. You said the seal coat at any time in a pavement's life, five, seven, three, whatever. In one particular... In this bid, we have the Red Baron Arena. I believe Councilman Schaefer brought up last week because we have to re-stripe it, we're going to chip seal it. I think Mendoc sells black paint that they could paint those yellow stripes for a lot cheaper than putting $17,400 on chip sealing at parking lot. There are streets in my ward, and I believe other streets in town, that could use chip sealing before the Red Baron parking lot. I would vote against it if it's included in here because of that. I'm not saying it doesn't need it at some point, but if we're going to chip seal that parking lot just to cover up the yellow stripes because the yellow stripes are too narrow now, somebody screwed up way back when, when it was built, that's hindsight. We can go back and correct that. But I think that Mendoc... I've seen Mendoc use black paint on highways and cover up the yellow markers. So I believe there could be some black paint available that we could paint those stripes, repaint the yellow where they're supposed to be, and chip seal it in another three years or something. I just think there's more streets... There are streets in towns that are more critical than the Red Baron Arena Park.
Could I ask something on that? As far as the Red Baron Arena and Exville parking lot, is the funds for that coming out of the food and beverage tax and not the general fund?
After further review and some information you provided, we are likely going to take the funds out of that, out of the sales tax revenue and the remaining fund balance.
So is this considered new construction or is this considered maintenance then? Because if it's maintenance, it would come out of food and beverage. If it's new construction, wouldn't it come out of the sales tax? But either way, it's not coming out of the general fund.
Correct.
And so it's not taking money from other neighborhood projects.
Right.
And so it wouldn't help the neighborhoods any if we didn't do the project now.
If we didn't do the...
If we didn't do Red Baron.
Right, if we didn't do the Red Baron.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And I think that if it's new construction, it would have to come out of surplus funds. We've already...
We were not going to collect additional sales tax. That goes to... The sales tax pays the bonds. We could only pay that out of construction if we had remaining funds and it was eligible as construction.
Are there eligible funds left in the construction fund? Capital Projects Fund?
Okay, so there are funds remaining in the construction funds. We did collect sales tax prior to bonding, which reduced the bonding amount. We are authorized to bond up to the 17 million. We only bonded 15 around there somewhere. So we do have extra funds and it's not capped at that 17. So the sales tax is to pay back the bonds and the new construction or construction or capital equipment needs. It's kind of worded a little funky.
So we could use that same fund set for the additional parking lot if we choose to move forward with that also.
Correct. And I believe that is kind of what we are recommending going forward.
Yep, good, all right.
Yes.
Thank you.
So my question, it's actually a question for Glenn and Jason, is we've got varying studies that give us varying information. Is there a way to do our own little experiment in Marshall by taking half of a street and doing a chip seal and half of a street and leaving it be or doing the alternative? Seal coat and just seeing which one? Because that way, same street, same traffic, we'll just see which one wears out first and then go from there.
Certainly could.
That's what I would propose. That way, we figure it out. You're saving half the money to get the right answer.
Well, and on that line, we could even go better than that. We could do one of yours on the approved plan, take a block out of a seven-block street, seal coat one block on new, seal coat one on five years, and then skip seal coat on one and not on the other that's in that same age range and keep really good notes because by the results, we'll all be gone, but somebody will appreciate that.
I think that's a great idea.
Jim will still be here because it's a baby.
Jason will still be here.
Jim's a baby, but...
We'll look into a little bit of that.
I would appreciate it.
We'd have to do a little PR campaign about why it wasn't my house, but...
Just ultimately save money. It's pretty easy.
We can discuss that internally.
So basically, what it's kind of boiling down to, you're asking for $175,200 to do chip sealing as much as possible where you can, based on whatever we... Concept we come up, half-street, full-street, half-block, whatever.
But I believe...
You're making that motion. I'm making a motion that we move ahead with that chip seal and proceed on and get done what we can get done.
And I'll second that.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Now, discussion on the motion.
Yeah, just make in that that there's two things that are definitely happening and that's the parking lot at the fire department, correct? And the parking lot at Red Baron. No, Red Baron is a separate piece.
Until today, it was we can do at least an analysis staff-wise about paint versus chip seal. Now, the issue there might be utilizing some of the excess construction funds for getting that done now. It's not a waste. It's not just to cover up the striping.
No, no, I get that.
You know, that parking lot now is how many years old? I mean, time flies here. I mean, if it's anywhere between three and five years old, it probably should be done.
And it is four, right?
So I think we'd like to do that anyway, so...
But it is included in the...
Yes.
And accepts the bid.
And once you chip seal that parking lot, then it's good for one. And we paint the lines correctly, that parking lot...
Another seven years minimum.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move us to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. Let's reopen it.
I got it.
I'm not going to change the way I vote. But now we'll close the voting. That is the way I voted the first time. That motion still passed, okay.
Just keeping you honest here.
So we will move to agenda item number 16. This is the wastewater treatment facilities improvement plan. This is the construction services agreement with Bolton and me. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor Council. And I'd like to have John come up in front of the council on this one.
Is this where we're saving the 3.5 million?
Our minds are kind of like here.
Mine's a little funny.
If you take a look at the agreement, this is a typical consultant agreement for inspection services and our attorney has reviewed it as well. We did a couple of minor tweaks to it. But it is hourly, not to exceed. There are some provisions in here for adjusting the hourly rate according to their business model. First of the year, they probably adjust those somewhat. The city normally hires the testing services consultant separately. That's in here separately as well. We could have them do that, but we have a good testing firm that we've always used. But it's important to note that there is a maximum amount in the contract. However, in that maximum amount, there's also some additions that can be charged. And I want to make sure that John is looking at us all and saying, "The approximately 6.5% of construction cost is very reasonable on normal engineering consulting agreements like this." But I think he understands too with the discussion that we've had, the importance of keeping it within budget. And just want to mention that in acknowledgment of Bolton and me. They've always been good working with us and with Bob's crew and giving us the product that we need. But I wanted to bring that up on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Questions? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion passes. You can close it out.
Thank you.
You're dismissed. I didn't beat you up too bad.
Still want to see you again.
Agenda item number 17 is the facade improvement matching grant program. Astera Anken from Economic Development has come forward and presented this.
I'm glad I'm not talking about wastewater stuff.
It's two of us.
You're a lot smarter about it tonight.
I just learned a lot from sitting through that, so thank you. Here to discuss tonight, the new facade improvement program that was approved by the EDA board at the last meeting. So I'll let Kritika just do a quick introduction of herself and give a brief overview of the program before I jump into what the ask is for the council tonight.
Hi, I'm Kritika Shah. So I'm working as a summer intern for TARA with Economic Development Authority. So part of my program... So part of my program, like for internship in facade improvement, improvement is part of my project and with other projects following. So I'll just give you the overview of facade improvements. So this is, this facade improvement matching grant is designed to help create healthy commercial areas by improving the appearance of the building. And so, and this is a reimbursement program. So budget for the program is like $50,000 and the program will provide each interested company 50% of the total cost up to maximum amount of $5,000.
Thank you.
Yeah, so one of the things that drove the EDA's discussions to go in this route was a couple of things. One of them was looking at what other communities are doing to make sure that especially their commercial areas are clean and inviting to people that are coming to town for shopping or for whatever events and patronizing our businesses. Because even though it doesn't add a lot of tax base, the EDA went into this discussion that, you know, you shouldn't judge a book by its cover, but a lot of people do and perception is reality. So if there's ways that we can improve the, the look of businesses, whether it's through signage or siding or something when it faces the street to make it more of a welcoming place, that was one of the goals of the, the EDA to help spur future growth. And then the other thing is that it, there's an extensive list in the program that the EDA board passed that, of what the funds can and cannot be used for. It has to be visible from a main street. It can't be the backside or whatever. This is facade only. And then it is on a reimbursement basis, which Kritika had mentioned. So it's reimbursement basis only, so the project would essentially be complete before any funds were dispersed. So there's a very clear criteria that needs to be met before any dollars are spent. Real quick on what the, the request is from city council tonight is that the EDA board is requesting permission from city council to use up, or to use up to $50,000 from Fund 214. And what Fund 214 is, is if you guys remember about a year ago or maybe a little bit longer, there's these MIF one-time exception funds. And it came to council at that time where these funds were so restricted that the states gave all of the EDAs in, in the state an option to turn back 20% of the funds, but then the local EDAs can keep 80%, essentially unrestricted. The only caveat or requirement of those 80% of the funds that we kept was that we report on what we use them for. So instead of the EDA using Fund 204, which we could use, that's available, we're requesting to use the funds out of 214, which, which is a portion of those one-time exception funds. So at the time that council approved the one-time exception funds, the council requested to have any uses proposed to city council and then all of those reportings must go to the state. So it's kind of a two-step process with anything that is being used out of Fund 214. So with that discussion, I don't know, Steve, if you want to add anything or John from the EDA meeting, but that's the impetus behind why we want to use the, we would like to use the Fund 214 because there are reporting requirements. And so it's kind of like with any business or any pool of funds, you want to use the most restricted ones first or the ones that have requirements first.
And we, we talked about that at EDA and we talked, there was a lot of discussion on generated and I actually brought up that we should see if it's being used. So we put a, we recommended putting a cap on it and that, that passed. We would put the cap that we'll do this for a year and see, is anybody using it? And if anybody's using it and it's benefiting the looks of the city so we can hopefully draw, I mean, it's a hard, it's a hard metric to measure is how much more business is coming. And it's a hard metric to measure how much business are we losing because our facades aren't up to date. But we thought that it was a pretty good idea and that's where the discussion's from. So we're going to do it for a finite amount of time and then reevaluate it.
Yeah, the EDA board in the motion, just to clarify or add a little bit to what Steve mentioned, the, the motion by EDA was for 12 months or up to $50,000, whichever comes first. And then at that time, we would evaluate, is it working? Is it not? Do we want to continue? If so, what would we change? Or, or is the program sunset and we're going to go in a different direction? And we did use other facade improvement programs from other communities that we modeled ours after. So it's not, it's not a brand new, we're the first ones doing this. We did take other programs that had some success and, and kind of ran with that. And that's how the EDA board got to this point where we're at tonight.
And the reason on the excluded list, bike parking is not, is because it's really limited to an improvement that actually happens on the building.
Right.
I have two quick questions here.
One is, it indicates that the applications are reviewed and approved by a committee, the makeup of which varies. So who's on the committee?
It's the EDA board.
So it's just the EDA, okay. And the second is the process that's used here. Is this something where you would every month get some applications and approve or not approve them or wait until all of them come in and then decide how to portion them between all of them or is it a first come, first served type of thing?
Yeah, it's a first come, first served type of thing. So that's why we wanted to, instead of having Kritika or I visit a business and them getting the first crack at it, we posted it on social media. There will be an ad going out in the newspaper. It was in the, the Chamber Connection newsletter to try to reach everybody first. So there's no advantageous of this business new first or we're trying to help this business, but not that one. We want to be very fair with how the funds are, you know, applied for and dispersed. So similar with the UCAP Small Cities Development Program, priority will be given to fully complete applications at the time that they're received.
I, I know sometimes at the university, they have funds and a lot of people apply and then, and what they try to do is kind of apportion the money so a lot of different people get it. It's not a first come, first served type of thing and I didn't know if that's what you're trying to do here or not. But here it's basically first one in would have the first chance at the money.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just have one comment and, you know, you guys take it and I'll make a motion after. But I see that you have here two contractors bid that meet the following guidelines. Some of these places might have trouble getting two bids.
Mm-hmm.
You know, with the small cities grants, you know, I'm not looking at the ones here in Marshall because I can't, but in other towns, they, some of these people aren't, they're not going to get two bids.
We had that discussion and if that's something that we need to consider or if they can say we asked somebody for a bid and, and they can't get two bids, then we can handle that on a case-by-case basis.
Just so you're aware of that.
Especially if it's a specialty type of building material or something like that.
And then in item three there, you do not have to be licensed in the state of Minnesota to work on commercial buildings. That is a residential building license, not a commercial. So you don't have to be a licensed contractor to work on commercial buildings. It's in section B.
Got it, I just found it. Yep, got it.
Commercial build, they don't have to be licensed.
Good point. That's kind of scary.
It is. I am licensed.
Can't we still leave that in there though?
You, Doobin Kyfer's is eliminated then. I don't, I don't believe, he may not be, but I don't believe Steve is like, you know.
Really?
Well, he's a commercial builder. Commercial builders do not have to be licensed in the state of Minnesota.
And it says and/or insured, so they're probably going to be bonded or insured. So I think recovered, recovered there.
Just be logic, I lead licensed bonded insured, but that's, commercial builders that work on commercial building.
Any other questions for Tara? If not, is there a motion?
I move.
Seconded by Steve, seconded by, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
Are we changing that language? Just want to know the council's direction.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment. I will second that friendly amendment.
Who understands the motion? Any other discussion?
Just a quick question. On, on the first page, I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I, I took for granted this is citywide.
Yeah, it is citywide, but it's in a business.
In step two, it refers to the Central Heritage District.
So that is, yes, so it's.
They have to follow those, those guidelines as well if they're within that district.
Right.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you and good luck on your internship. We'll move then to consider the approval of the transient merchant license for Sweet Kettle Madness LLC. I'll ask Kyle Box, city clerk, to make this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have two transient merchant licenses coming before you tonight. The first one is from Sweet Kettle Madness LLC. They will be, they are wanting to work at the Shades of the Past event coming up in June at the Runnings location. I believe the applicant is here with us tonight to kind of, to kind of ask the council for amendments to how we operate our transient merchant. Right now, our, our applications require a $5,000 bond with a license fee of $315. Now, council has amended the $315 fee to other businesses or prorated that fee to other transient merchant licenses or applicants in the past, but we've always, to the best of my knowledge, we've, we've kept that $5,000 bond. So that's, this is kind of the request from the applicant is to, to look at those two items and I can have her speak to that and I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
I am Jamie Warner and I'm representing my daughter's business who's not here right now. She's doing a study abroad in Australia, New Zealand, and Italy. So I'm taking her spot for right now, so. We have a problem because we've tried this last year and you guys gave us the waiver of not having the $5,000 bond and then charging us $31 for the event because it's just the one event we have to have this for Marshall. And we went to three different places again, as like last year, and everybody laughs at us because we have a $2 million insurance policy. And we had to up it because Noble County won 200, $2 million for their county fair. And we have not yet found one person that will give us a $5,000 bond because of our $2 million policy. Our insur, insurance person says, our policy will cover more and beyond if anything happens at the event, which shouldn't, but in case it ever does, it would go right underneath our policy, would never come back on the cities and that. And we're just wondering if we can, in the future, I know the, the way it sounds, what Kyle is telling me that there was written back in the 1970s and if we can maybe update that and maybe put it and/or 50,000, $5,000 bond or at least a million dollar insurance policy because every other place we've been to in South Dakota, Iowa, and Minnesota, we have to have at least a million dollar insurance policy to run our kettle corn business.
And you're required to provide that proof of insurance.
Yes.
Yep. And I'm assuming list the city as a loss insured under that policy for that event.
Yep, yeah, there, nothing can come back on the city because we made, that's how we made it sure it was put in the policy for us.
So then if I'm understanding it right, if we get a copy or a statement from their insurance, that, that's a certificate of insurance listing the city, we're, we're covered and that should circumvent the bond, correct?
Yes, that would.
Yeah, okay.
To be honest, what is, I guess, or Kyle, what is the purpose of the bond? Because I don't know why she has liability insurance, what is? And because it is, it is.
Yeah, if you got insurance, you should, that should replace the need for a bond.
Is there something where we should revise the policy so it's?
I think the applicant's probably accurate. It is required because it always has been placed.
We've always done it that way.
Like chip sealing.
Yeah, check that.
That would be my response to you, Councilmember Lizinski, is the $5,000 bond is, when it was put into place, it was designated for a transient merchant. So one could argue that a food vendor is not a transient merchant, so the bond, I believe, and I could be wrong, but is to, it is to, I can't think of the right word, but to.
Indemnify.
Yeah, indemnify, make someone whole again if they're, but now, but an insurance policy will do this, the policy would do this.
If $5,000, if somebody gets sick from their popcorn, $5,000 is not going to go very far.
Have you been?
Not today.
They'd leave you late on.
You could look at what other cities are doing regarding this and we could come with a revision to the policy.
And I think in the past, and Kyle, I think you were part of that discussion that, you know, we, we really have a need to address food vendors, whether it's a food truck or another vendor separately from transient merchant license. These are not people that are, you know, putting roofs on houses after a storm, these.
Well, and they have liability insurance. We don't carry bonds.
Right, right.
And I can give Kyle what we have for Brookings. I mean, it's, they have, we've been with them, we've gone last two years and we have about four events with them every year. And three of them are at the Swift Tale Center. So they're a little bit more fussy on how things are ran, but I know the city of Brookings makes us do the same thing. The only city that we have to fill paperwork out for the city. Anywhere else, we do not. We just, wherever we're going, we fill out, they have our information, ST 19, our copy of our insurance, and our Minnesota tax ID number. So if I can, I'm, I'm more willing to help you guys out and Kyle to make it more easier for somebody like us to come in, to get more people into Marshall and bring in good food or, and hopefully not choke on the popcorn or get food poisoning.
Well, thank you. Your, your input is help.
So Kyle, do you have a recommendation as to what the fee should be here?
My recommendation, staff recommendation would be to waive the $5,000 bond requirement in place and then use the insurance policy in place of that. And then I would do, I would recommend a license fee of $30 for the one-day event.
So where did we come up with $31 last year?
10% of the.
Was that what?
A dime on the dollar. Basically what we did is sold a one-month permit because I think we've done that before where we've broken it down to one month. So I mean, technically, if, if you could figure out the dates that you're playing and get it within a 30-day window, you could work more than one event.
I would make a motion that we go with Kyle's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve. Discussion?
The only other thing I want to add is I think it should go to Ways and Means where we have maybe a daily fee into our schedule so we don't have to have.
And also Legislative Ordinance Committee.
Yep.
Very good. Did we vote on that?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We'll move to a vote.
I would give you a copy of the debate.
Now we'll close voting. And the motion does pass. So agenda, item number 19 is the, another transient merchant license for, for, for a food truck, right?
Correct, this is for a food truck. They are familiar with the Marshall, Marshall area. I am coming forward to you tonight on their behalf. This is just a request to prorate the license fee from the, essentially from June until the end of the year instead of charging them the full $315. They have provided every other requirement on the, on the application.
Are there any questions about this recommendation?
Do they have, I mean, the same thing on them? They've got insurance, I'm sure?
They provided both, so.
Second. Motion by Jim, seconded by Russ to approve the recommendation for a transient merchant license and that would also include the proration of the AP.
Correct.
Discussion on that motion?
And they don't need to provide the bond. They already. We've already provided it, so.
Yeah, we need to address that.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Okay, so we'll move to agenda number 20, Commission Board Liaison Report. Actually, mine had not been, we last met, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, the Regional Radio Board met and, you know, most of that's way over my head, but it's always an interesting meeting to go to. But one of the things that came up that lit a little bit of spark under, under me is that there's a, there's a committee that the Regional Board has asked that we have a delegate to attend and it's a statewide effort and they're looking at cellular broadband and a, and an app that, that's downloaded that supports public safety. So what it does is fire police, others can take calls and work off of their cell phone and it would also integrate into the 800 megahertz radio system, which gives us a ton of redundancy. But they're really on the very early stages of kind of developing this out and they were looking for people who are young enough and techy enough and weird enough, for lack of a better term, that their device is like another hand. Well, now that we have Jasmine out there and the Merit Center's getting traction, the good news is we're having some growing pains and we're having to reestablish the, the dance about who gets what. And there was a little bit of space creep and some other things that were taken advantage of because there was nothing else going on out there and nobody telling them they couldn't. And Jim Marshall has been working a lot and very close at hand along with Jasmine, with Don Rainier, who represents Minnesota West, and, and Jim is, is working hard to get that agreement finished. And we're not looking for a huge increase in fee from them because we understand that they have to go to their board too and get some approvals, but we are trying to get it adjusted where we think it's more fitting to the space that they have. And then also getting them to, when they project a certain amount of money for classroom space, that we don't have to work on them for $30 here and $50 there with an invoice. They just pay the fee and we're done, and this is how you arrange your room rentals and this is how we share the space. So I talked to Chief Marshall or Public Safety Director Marshall again this afternoon about that, and it is progressing, and, and he, him and Jasmine are doing a really good job with that. And our relationship with Minnesota West in that campus is very valuable, and, and so we, we just need to kind of get that figured out. So those are good pains to have, but my wife and I got back from Texas last night at about 10:00, 10:15, and we were out at the Viesman Lot, and there was still active blue, blue red lights out there using the track, even though the good part of the new part is under construction. That place is getting a lot of activity, a ton of feedback, and a lot more demand, so I think there's going to be a lot more issues with Merit coming forward to get approval by the council and, and more reporting back, but that, that place is really, I think, on a positive track forward, and it's pretty exciting to see what's going on out there. And that's really all I have for, for Liaison Report.
Thank you, Greg. Steve.
Community Services and Cable Commission have not met. Economic development, we've addressed everything tonight with the expansion and the, what was it? I had a brain fart.
Facades.
Yes.
Thank you, Steve. Glenn.
My commissions have not met.
John.
Steve covered EDA, but utilities did meet, and one other discussion, line of discussions was going through last year's key indicators. I just want to run a number of them by you here, just so you kind of know really how, really how good of a utilities we've got going here. One of the things I talk about is the five nines as far as reliability. It's 99.999% of the time, well, our utility came in at 99.9974%, so just very close to that ideal reliability factor. DNR puts out a, kind of a lost water, because you always have some water loss through the distribution system, and the goal from the DNR is no more than 10%. We're running 5.6% on MMU, so well under. Our rates are 97, we're lower than 97% of the Minnesota municipal utilities, so that's a comparison that gets done against all the other Minnesota municipal utilities. And the water usage, the old standard was try to be under 100 gallons per person per day. DNR wants a goal of 75 gallons per person per day. We are actually running right now 50 gallons per person per day, so we're half the old standard and doing a good job of conserving water. One of the other things, we're going to be dangling out there to see how, what the interest is. There's interest by some companies, more of the commercial users, to be able to advertise that they use 100% reliable, renewable energy in their business. Right now, Marshall is at 43% of our energy that is all renewable, so we're almost, I was going to say almost a halfway point. If a company wants to supplement that so they can say they're using 100% renewable and what they call greening up, there is an option through our supplier and through MMU where they will pay a little bit more, and it isn't all that much, but pay more, and the percentages, they're not sorting electrons, but the percentages are, work out that, you know, they will make sure they get, you know, enough purchased of the reliable, or I mean, the renewable energy to cover that. So there's a sheet coming out that's going to the businesses, some of them may be out there now, and if you want to supplement that other 57%, it's half a cent per kilowatt hour is what it really comes down to, so it's a fairly minimal expense. And then they can advertise 100% renewable energy for a corporation or whatever. That's about it.
Okay, thank you. John, Russ.
Hi, boards have not met.
Yep.
The Law Enforcement Center met today. I was busy, but it's a long weekend, I had to deal with one of the papers, and the other two have not met.
Very good. We'll move then to Councilmember Individual Items. Greg.
And, yeah, thanks, actually, the Law Enforcement Center group did meet and I was there. I thank you for reminding me of that. We're looking, they're working out the, the issues with space sharing between the Police Department and Sheriff's Department. You know, we're on a 50/50, and I just maybe to quick bring everybody up to speed, when the addition was done to the Law Enforcement Center, the city and, and Lyon County shared that at 50/50. Marshall carried the bonds, but the debt service was cooperatively paid. I think we paid like 51% and they paid 49, but then they cover a lot of the operational day-to-day and custodial pieces, and they're sharing back and forth. If you recall, we came back here early this year with some issues with the HVAC. The new unit for the roof has been ordered. It's actually in, but they're waiting for the crane, so they've got some temporary stuff working in there now. They'll be setting that on the roof and that should complete that project. We were looking at capital expenditure pieces going out for the next four to five years. We're going to have to do a roof on that facility, which is going to run about $100,000 somewhere in the next probably four years. All total, I think it was about $252,000. Sharon was anticipated for capital expenditures, including lighting, carpeting, ceiling tiles, just good, solid, take care of the building, keep it fresh, keep it up to date, but we're working on a four-year plan, and we'll probably meet again before budget time to talk about that. But we're going to kind of spend four years building that up so that none of us are having to do a heavy levy to get that done and then do it cooperatively, come out in, in year four. So I think it was a good meeting. Sharon did a good job of pushing it back to the two heads of the, of the two departments to, you guys work this thing out and bring it back to us. And Keith, the maintenance supervisor for the county, was very helpful in overseeing. So, I mean, I, I feel good about where those meetings are. I think everybody did feel pretty good about that and come away. So you weren't the only one that wasn't there. Grautman missed it too, so we were each shy one, so the force was still balanced. And that, now I'll go to individual items. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing, I, I'd like to, I hope we can revisit this commercial abatement because I believe that the but for should not apply to this. That's a TIF piece. When, when we put this abatement out, I was of the mindset that we're encouraging anybody to invest in their business, and if it gives us increased property tax revenue, we're going to share in that increase. We're going to take part and they're going to keep part of it. And, and the but for on, on that tax abatement piece to me is really, it's, it's a speed bump, I think, that doesn't need to be there if, if we're going to really encourage people to invest in the community. I think we should look at the employment pieces and the rest of that, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable applying the but for. Commissioner Baricola, there's a great find in there. I was honestly surprised that the but for language was in there. I was disappointed because I don't think, I don't think it belongs there, and I, if we can change that, if we can amend that, I'd like to see us discuss that because I really want to encourage commercial investment, new and expansion to existing, and I'd love to be able to apply that abatement. It's a lot more fair than TIF. I just think it's a good tool and I, and I think it's attractive and we need to make sure we fix that. The other piece that I want to talk about, and we've talked about this with building stuff, I've been looking in the neighborhoods in my ward and I'm really disappointed with how bad the trash, the junk problem is. And I'm not talking just garbage. I'm talking mattresses, furniture, junk vehicles, there's appliances, there's refrigerators and freezers, sitting nests to garages where little kids play and the doors and the lids are still on them. I mean, those are kid coffins, and it just, I looked at that last week before we went to Texas and I was disgusted. And, and I think somehow we need to support our staff, that we don't wait for the neighbors to complain. If we've got staff that drive through that to see that, I want to, I don't want to turn our, our staff into neighborhood cops, but when you see things like, and I mean, there's one place in one of the alleys, there's at least seven tube TV sets stacked, and they're not stacked where they're protecting the tubes. And if those things break, I mean, technically, you're going to have to call me to come in there and clean that up, okay? That's crazy. Those, that's, those are, that's, that's e-waste and it's hazardous. Those, those old tube TVs are registered that they have to have special handling. There's a reason why the county has special collection point and charges for that, and we need to, we need to get in here and fix this. This is crazy. It, it looks like a ghetto in some of these alleys, and it's really disappointing. Unfortunately, I believe they're rental properties, and that really is disappointing. So at some point in time, we need to get on top of this because this is, this is crazy. And, and I know there's some neighbors that are extremely frustrated and have been very patient, and I know the city is working the paces the way we have it set up. So they're using the tools that we have, and what I'm saying is, is I think we need to get in and check our toolbox. We need to sharpen them or get a bigger hammer in there because what I saw in those alleys was disgusting and disappointing.
And on that note, Craig, because I agree with you 100%, is, is as a contractor, as a business owner, if we work in those neighborhoods, we set a dumpster four houses down, all of a sudden we have a dumpster that's full of...
Junk.
TVs.
Yes.
TVs and fridges.
Yep.
And now, and I agree, it is rentals, it is landlords, and it is tenants, it is also homeowners.
Right.
But we need to address that because otherwise people such as unsuspecting business owners such as myself end up paying hundreds of dollars to get rid of somebody else's junk, and that is a huge pet peeve of mine.
Right.
I would support, you're not supporting the staff to go get rid of that stuff and build the appropriate person.
Yeah.
Because somebody else ends up paying for it.
Or it's going to end up in road ditches. I mean, there's a couple things.
Or the compost site.
Right. Yeah, yep, yep. And I mean, I'm seeing it too, where when we put a little bit of pressure on, some of them are either brave or ignorant enough that it shows up at the, at the recycling collections too, including bins full of dirty diapers. I mean, seriously, who thinks you're going to recycle those diapers? Just put them in your compost pile, then open them up, turn them backwards, and put them in there. I mean, it's just, it's crazy. So somehow, and I don't want to, I'm not putting this on the city because it's our staff are doing a great job, but we've, we've got this right now based on, and I know you guys drive around and you see it and you have to bite your tongue because that's what we gave you, and we need to change that.
And it's not, and I agree, it's not the staff's fault, it's the people.
No.
We need to force people to take responsibility for their junk.
Yes.
Plain and simple.
But I want the staff to have the ability to come in and, and put it on a log and say, hey, I just saw this, and, and we can use that as a complaint.
And I would support that greatly.
Anything else, Greg?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
The only thing I'd like to bring up, and it's a unique idea and I want people to mull on it, but there is a lot of stuff on urban development, urban garden, gardening, and I've had several constituents come up and say, you guys have chickens in Marshall?
No, my wife wants one.
Yeah, and I don't see a problem with it. As long as you don't have any roosters. I'm not for roosters, I'm for chickens because they offer good organic eggs and it's like...
Jim could have his chicken on a leash and take it for a while.
Well, Emily would do that.
Because we will have chickens in my backyard.
But no, I mean, you look at it, and I've been, they have them in downtown Minneapolis.
They have them in Duluth, you can have chickens.
They have them in Duluth.
You cannot have roosters, you can have chickens.
Right. So I'm all for it. I don't think it's a big deal.
I think that's discriminatory, those poor roosters.
Roosters make a lot of noise.
Ah, you know.
Well, Steve, you're correct. We should mull on this.
We should scratch it out.
Yeah, as, one of my undergrads was in animal science, and I'd tell you, it's very, very difficult to determine from a baby bird and some animal baby, so pretty soon you end up with cockadoodledoo in your backyard.
And then he becomes stew.
Sounds like cockadoodledoo stew, yeah, soup to be...
Anything else, Steve? Glenn.
I was wondering if in the near future we could have reports on the City Hall remodeling project, how that's progressing, and then also what's happening with the rental ordinance, proposed rental ordinance.
Jim.
All I have is the Encourage the Bike Share program that we all heartake in Kentucky. I want to rec your commend Mr. Schaefer being the first one back, but I think it's something...
I was last one there.
I was the last one.
Knocked the hell out of a couple of people.
But it's a good program, and that's all I have tonight.
I would just jump in there, Jim, and, and thank the entire council and Sharon and Chief Marshall for 100% participation.
Mike Dennis was there too.
Yes. Russ.
I agree with Dr. Meister. I had a lady come up to me after, in church one day and asked me about, about chickens in Marshall, so I had to research the ordinance and send her this stuff. She was very appreciative, along with Councilman Schaefer, and I think Councilman Meister brought up, I've had a meeting with Residents United meeting from Broadmoor Valley on May 20. They continue to have their struggles, and they asked me to present to the council some more photographs. I believe that we have seen some of these before, but they continue to have their problems and issues out there. They asked about the updating of a rental ordinance because they said, I think Jackson, Wilmer, they named about three or four cities that do have them. I think one city had a multiple-page rental ordinance, and I think, they said Jackson was a simple page and a half rental ordinance. So they, they continue to have their troubles, and I just told them to, to remain positive, to keep things on the ice side, working with the landlord, and I can't, you know, I couldn't guarantee anything council action or anything else, but they at least, I, I was there for almost two hours, so listening to their concerns, so I'm passing that, their concerns along to the rest of the council.
I'm, somebody's, I guess, have a question. Can somebody just reconsider the junk ordinance?
Well, that's, that's, I had this conversation with city administrator today. I said, I go back to the Marshall Hotel, and I said, that was a blight. So how did we get rid of that blight? We called in the state fire marshal. Now, some of these photos, if you look through them, there are probably some hazards out there with, with electrical, there's some plumbing that's not hooked up correct, so could our building department enforce that, you know, but how do we go, maybe take it one step further and go to the state fire marshal or something and have him come down and take a look at it? Because it's, it really is an ice, and I feel for the people. They're, they have about 79 total, oh, no, excuse me, 94 total units, about 79 of them are occupied, about 35 or 40 are rentals, the rest are owned, and they, and a couple of the gals are quite, he's just trying to drive us out, but we can't afford to move, you know, where are we going to go? You know, so it's, he's, he's making life miserable for them, really is.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know that staff has put a ton of time and energy into that. Has there been a conversation, I believe the, the community health is the, is the delegated authority for that license, correct?
Correct.
Have they been active in this?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
I believe so, yeah, they have, Craig. Yeah, they have.
Good. And the reason why I ask that is, is I've been involved, actually, there's been a couple of situations north of us, substantially north of us, where trailer parks that have been similar condition have not taken action, and it has been enough of a threat to public health and welfare that my program has, has cut a work order and gone in with a court order, cleaned it up, and then are now going back into class recovery with the owner. That's a really, really ugly path, but at a point in time, you know, sometimes, and the problem with it is, is cause and effect, because there's a few residents that then got zeroed in on as a whistleblower and got seriously punished.
And that's what they were concerned with. Their retaliation that they have received from, from the owner already, you know, he's, he's making it, you know, he made them pay for, they held a potluck picnic in an empty lot. are occupied, about 35 or 40 are rentals, the rest are owned, and they, and a couple of the gals said, quite, he's just trying to drive us out, but we can't afford to move. You know, where are we going to go? You know, so it's, he's making life miserable for them, really is.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know that staff has put a ton of time and energy into that. Has there been a conversation? I believe the community health is the delegated authority for that license, correct? Have they been active in this?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
I believe so, yeah, they have, Craig. Yep, they have.
Good. And the reason why I ask that is, is I've been involved, actually, there's been a couple of situations north of us, substantially north of us, where trailer parks that have been similar condition have not taken action, and it has been enough of a threat to public health and welfare that my program has cut a work order and gone in with a court order, cleaned it up, and then are now going back into cost recovery with the owner. That's a really, really ugly path, but at a point in time, you know, sometimes, and the problem with it is, is cause and effect, because there's a few residents that then got zeroed in on as a whistleblower and got seriously punished.
And that's what they were concerned about, their retaliation that they have received from the owner already. You know, he's making it, you know, he made them pay for, they held a potluck picnic in an empty lot.
And he charged them rent on the-
Eighteen hundred dollars to use that, and they paid it. On advice from their attorney, they had to pay it, so they paid it.
Well, we've heard the representation that the owner has, so I mean, yeah, it's nothing surprises me.
Right. So, and again, they're, how should I say this? They're just kind of up against a brick wall. They don't know where to go to next. So, and they say they're taxpayers and everything else, so they wanted me to bring all this message to the council, and I told them I would, and hopefully, they're watching it, so, and we'll see what happens in the future.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
John, I know you've been involved in that, some of those discussions also.
Yeah, we've had some discussions and back, I think we reported on the last time with the Attorney General's Office and discussions. Just a couple of things that just came out today along that line, so if anybody has any contacts with the owner. One of the things that did get through the legislature this past year is there are some added dollars in the housing infrastructure bonds and a designation that those can be used for manufactured home parks. So, it has to be by the owner of the park that makes the request to get the funds, and it'd be basically low-interest loans and various things like that, but it's precisely for the sewer, water, roads, exactly the issues that we're talking about here. There is funding out there that can be tapped into and certainly willing to work with anyone to make the connections to get that going. There's been deputy commissioner that's been designated to handle a lot of the issues with the manufactured homes. So, that's, and the other hand, other side of it, there's also Worthington, they just proceeded to have the organization buy out the owner of the mobile home park in Worthington, and there was money that was, again, because it's an ownership organization that's doing it, that qualified them for some dollars through the housing funds to do the infrastructure and redo that. So, there's a lot of things out there. Some of it is the owner simply has to make the request and start the process, and, you know, it's not always free money, but there's, there's assistance, there's money there. And again, and it's specifically for that to improve the infrastructure, so, you know, there are means of getting it done. Okay, anything else, John? I think the rest of it you guys covered. Oh, the bike share would say that not only enjoyed the ride, but since then, I've seen in multiple occasions, bikes being out used, some out to Camden Park last weekend, so they're getting used, they're going out and around, so it's good to see.
Very good. Thank you, John. A couple of quick items. The Highway 23 Coalition serve on their board, and they met this past week and then, or last week, and there is a membership meeting that will occur next Tuesday. So, the, or actually, let's, I'll double-check that date, but the point is, is that the Highway 23 Coalition is active legislatively, both at the state and federal level. There's a delegation of, I believe, 14 members that are going to Washington, D.C. in June to kind of make the case for some federal dollars, all with the goal of improving safety on Highway 23 as well as access and upgrading to four lane. So, the, as we all follow the legislature in the special session, during that special session Saturday morning, the good news, I think, for cities is that local government aid was restored to the level it was before the allotment that occurred, and that was, I believe, 2002 when that happened. So, it restores local government aid to that level. So, that benefits many cities. It will benefit City of Marshall, however, the magnitude of that benefit is not as great as some other cities just because of where we're at in that formula, where we have growth in our communities, so, you know, that increase in tax capacity perhaps offsets some need for local government aid. So, it's, the way that the formula is applied, we'll see a benefit. Some other communities that truly have a greater need because they aren't seeing growth or because they have an aging infrastructure, we'll see more. So, but it's a good thing for all cities. With that, I'll pause and then turn it to the next agenda item, which is staff reports. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and council members, a city hall committee did meet recently, and we would like to bring back where we're at with the drawings and renderings and hopefully have the architect present that to the city council so we can continue to have forward momentum on that particular project. We think we're fairly close to kind of what we want to see in terms of some design.
Will that be done in a work session?
Yes. The rental code ordinance, our goal is to have the appropriate committees meet so that the rental code ordinance can be considered by the council before the end of the year, and I know that's quite a ways away, but it's a really busy time of the year for some of our staff. Our planning and zoning administrator has draft language, and we really just need to sit down as a staff and review that draft language to go forward. He's done a lot of research with comparable, comparable cities. The rental code ordinance will help some of the residents in Broadmoor, but not all because of the rent to ownership of some of the units and the fact that the rental code ordinance will focus in on life safety issues and some of the issues that Broadmoor are outside of that life safety issues. They don't quite fit that rental code ordinance, but that's the status of that. And then, two other really quick things. The city met with MMU regarding information technology needs. We're likely going to sit down with RSM, which is MMU's contracted network administrator at this point, and discuss what the city's needs are since MMU has not hired an onsite network administrator. The IT services provided has, we've seen a decline, and that was, mentioned MMU. We, I think, did a pretty good job describing what our needs are, and I think, I think there's some agreement from RSM that the city has some needs that need to be met. We're a far bigger user of the technology than MMU, or we have greater users. Software needs are far, are far bigger, and so I think, I think having RSM kind of see some of that was important. The sharing arrangement with MMU does save us money. If we can continue that somehow, that would be great. We have to kind of see how MMU approaches that as we go forward. The, one quick thing on-
Oh, actually, that wasn't the topic I was going to go after, but actually, we did have a little bit of discussion, MMU, that there probably may need to be some divergence there that's going on because their needs with their new FERC or nuclear energy requirements because they're, because they're both a transmission operator and a, you know, generation are different now than what they were before, so that may be at some point that we have to look at different methods of taking it. Now, a comment was in our discussion with the city hall, I forgot about that, that we had mentioned that we'd establish a kind of line in the sand regarding the Marshall Hotel, that if there's any interest in that, that we should put a date down, something, or maybe along the line of end of June, if anybody has any interest in doing something with that building to bring a valid proposal forward, or after end of June, we probably consider tearing the building down and getting rid of it. So, I think, you know, we've looked at possibilities, we've tried what we can, I think, to get that going, but I really think we're to the point there where we have to decide and probably giving it, you know, a timeframe and saying, okay, if that's it, if you want a proposal, and maybe even end of June may be a little long, but it's time to do something, or it comes to.
One of the words that we used with MMU and their IT infrastructure was not divergence, although that wasn't an earlier thought process thrown out to them, is segmentation. We think that we can be housed on the same server as long as there's some separation within the same server, so we, we think if we can get that, we can continue. I mean, one of the proposals was to purchase a $100,000 server, and half the cost would be the city. Do we want to make that purchase without a guarantee of segmentation? And, you know, to have kind of a more of a role in that decision-making process is really important to us instead of here it is and here's your bill. So, we're, we're having good discussions on it, and I think, I think there's some additional thought process, which is, which is good. On the, on the hotel next door, and I, just because I want to cover this a little bit, we have a local developer that's interested, and it's actually a different local developer than the initial one, and then we recently met on Block 11, and the interested party on Block 11 may have interest in the hotel, so that's kind of a new development, too, and I worry that June may be, may be an advantageous schedule to see if, that should be the drop dead date on the hotel. And we do have to get a more final schedule from the architects on City Hall as well and see where we're at with that. My last thing on LGA. I think we looked at the amounts, and I think it's about $115,000 of increased LGA, and the two things that we'll probably come forward to the council with is it can be used for a straight levy reduction, or it can be used for debt reduction, which both eventually will reduce property taxes. Debt reduction may be later on, and the legislators will get a report at the beginning of January that shows every city levy increase, and they're going to be closely watching the additional money in LGA, and did it reduce property taxes? So, for our case, it will, one way or the other. It's relay discussion with the council, do you want it now, or do you want it later? And we also know that the $115,000, which would equate to roughly about 2% levy increase, that's probably not going to be able to encompass all of the levy, levy needs for 2020, but it will help. And it's really thankful that we got an LGA increase. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. But?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple of things. The Corps of Engineers is in town today and will be tomorrow doing the surveys of the river and the damages to the dike system. So, they'll be, they'll be looking at the three or four significant impacts of the spring runoff. Construction, of course, is slow because of the rain, and I'll mention Alex's name here again. I think he's done a drone review of the river system. Yes, he's nodding his head, yes. And so, I haven't seen it yet, but I think it's going to be a real important tool for us to use for management of the, of the river system adjacent to our dykes through town. That's all I got.
Dennis? Thank you, Mayor and Council. Work continues on the Spectrum Charter cable TV franchise agreement. There was a four-month delay at Spectrum Charter while they brought in new legal staff to significantly amend the agreement that was under their review. I am at phone conversation Thursday morning of this week with Spectrum Charter's representative to get that back on track. The major issue does, there were some changes made to how PEG funds, which go locally, how they are to be applied, and they, you can still use them for facilities and equipment, and we've used them for equipment very successfully. They want to eliminate the equipment, use it only for facilities, and if you don't spend all your money, we're going to cut you back. So, that's the ongoing discussion. Equipment is still allowed under federal statutes to use PEG money for equipment. So, we have that discussion. On the recent, secondly, proposed sale of HRA-owned property to Action Manufacturing. I met with Tim and Donna Swenson this morning. We had basically a closing in escrow. I've got the signed deed, he transferred the money into trust, but we haven't exchanged that yet because even though we've got local government approval, state government approval, the Corps of Engineers at the federal level has now inserted itself into the discussion. And there was some timelines that said, well, they have 180 days to review it. 180 days, we're going to lose the sale. So, I, we have a discussion tomorrow morning involving the Corps of Engineers to see if we can get that wrapped up. Also, we received a complaint about the fees charged for underground cable placement within the City of Marshall right-of-way. We do need to have some discussions with Ways and Means to discuss our fees that can be charged. Right now, there are, there's cable, there's fiber in our right-of-way, but we don't know whose it is, we don't know where it is. We ran into a heck of a problem a year ago with some CenturyLink cable out on Highway 59. So, number one, we need to know what's in there, and number two, we have a right to charge a reasonable fee for installation. That's where we're at, so we've got to get some direction from Ways and Means on that. And I've made other notes about but-for chickens rental in Broadmoor Valley. I would say, Broadmoor Valley, I did see a quick blurb on a proposed federal legislation by Minnesota Representative Ilman Omar, talking about before a manufactured park homeowner can sell it, he first has to offer it to the residents for them to buy. It just initial draft its proposal, I don't know if it's going anywhere, but it's based upon something that happened in the Twin Cities when the property owner said, you know what? This is more valuable as apartment buildings than it is as a manufactured home park. Shut it down, evicted everybody, and so they're trying to get some legislation before you do that. Offer, you have to offer it to the tenants, the occupants first. So, interesting to follow that, but somehow, we need to play that into the mix here. So. Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Agenda, item number 26 is update on state rulemaking. Go into what we think matters, is that just for information?
It's just for information, but read it because it's important to you, that you understand why the lawsuit was dropped. That's it.
Very good. The, you have the upcoming meetings under, listed under Agenda Item Number 27, which brings us to Agenda Item Number 28, adjourning this meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by, motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting.
Mine says it's not open.
Jim, you have a chance to change your vote now.